Okay, if you'll all take your seats, please, I'll call this regular meeting of the City Council to order at 6:00 PM Tuesday, February the 13th. We will begin this meeting by asking you to please put your cellphones in the off position. We will also have the invocation offered by Mary Ellen Summerlin, followed by the Pledge of Allegiance led by Chief Smith. You may stand if you wish.
Heavenly Father, Creator of everything we know or imagine, we thank you for our lives and for all the delights of our days, great and small. We thank you for the grace you give us to become fellow workers with you, to make this world more like your kingdom. Bless our efforts together to love and serve you by loving service to all your beloved creation. Jesus' name, amen.
Will you join me in the pledge, please?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
Thank you so much. Item number one is announcements of community interest. Stuart, I'm sorry, you moved the podium, I found you.
Hello to everybody. We've got a little different setup tonight, so I don't want anybody back there to come up and put telephones behind me when I'm not looking.
Do what you feel, folks.
All right, we have just a few announcements tonight. The city recently rolled out a water conservation initiative that includes three free items, I want to say free, to all city customers, city water customers. These items are a soil moisture meter, that's the one at the top left there, that helps ensure that you are not overwatering your grass and plants. We have sprinklers and rain gauges, which can be used to determine, I don't really need to tell y'all how to use a sprinkler or a rain gauge. And then, of course, a toilet leak detector tablets, and that can tell you, that emits a blue color if your toilet is leaking. Again, these items are free to all city water customers and can be picked up at City Hall during normal business hours, so feel free to come by and get some. All right, we talked about this a little last time, it's been, what, two weeks since the Super Bowl? If you're missing football, there's still just a little time left to sign up for flag football. I'm a little old for this, actually, I'm a lot old for it, but there's a lot of young people in town, so I think the registration ends this Friday. Games are going to be starting February 26th at Carver Park, and I think Ashley Boyle said we currently have eight teams, so I think we're going to have a nice season there. If you want to be on the team, call the Parks and Recreation office and get on one, I'm sure they'd love to have you. A great, great event Saturday night. The Daddy Daughter Dance was held at the Hill Country Youth Event Center. Again, in the past, we've had 250 people, this year, we had 500, and we moved it to the Youth Event Center. It was incredible. And 500, and it sold out well in advance, so we could, we probably could have taken more. It's a great turnout, it's a great event, and I know it's a great event for those parents, this, they'll look back someday and wonder where these, where that time went, because it does go fast. I don't think Ashley's in here, but if you see Ashley Boyle, this is another one of the things that the Parks and Recreation Department does, so tell her, great job.
Tell the daddies we'll make it a sleepover next year.
Okay. I don't know if y'all have been to our Facebook page, but this was just a stunning thing on Friday night.
Yes.
We have two brothers in town, Luke and Adam Proquet, and they've always been fascinated by fire trucks. And when it came time for them to attend Friday's Night to Shine event at the Hill Country Youth Event Center, the Kerrville Fire Department knew just how to get them there in style. Members of KFD Station Number Three surprised both young men with a ride in a fire engine. It's a once-in-a-lifetime memory, set up after their parents, Anita and Butch Proquet, contacted KFD Lieutenant Jaren Floyd with their request. Now, for those of you who don't know, Night to Shine is a worldwide event sponsored by the Tim Tebow Foundation, and it gives special needs teens and adults an opportunity for a first-class prom. You can see from the pictures there, it was a, it was a pretty amazing thing. And we just want to say thank you to all our fire department personnel who assisted in making this a special night for the Proquetes. Which leads me to my final slide, and I'm just preaching here for a minute, so forgive me, but when our kids are looking for role models, we need to steer them away from the superficial ones, you know, movie stars, TV stars, even sports stars. Those things don't last, those aren't real role models. And everyone in this picture right here, every single person, is heroic each and every day. And that's the kind of role models that I think we should be promoting. Thank you very much.
Thank you so much, Stuart. Any other announcements?
Yes.
Okay.
I would like to take this opportunity to announce publicly that I do not intend to run for reelection in May to place three. Instead, I will be supporting with great enthusiasm Judy Eichner, who picked up her packet today and intends to file tomorrow. Judy has served our community in dozens of public, business, and nonprofit positions over many years, and is just the sort of independent, proactive, positive-thinking, forward-looking person that it just gives me joy to leave my seat in her hands. Thank you, Judy.
I have only one other, and Charlie McElvein is not here, but it looks like on February the 14th, we have the Juvenile Chiefs Summit, I'm sorry, it was the 10th, yeah, they're here at the moment. 500 room nights at the YO for the Juvenile Chiefs Summit, so our hotel motel ought to look good going forward, so congratulations to him if he got that.
I've got one thing.
Yes?
I'd just like to point out that this recent thing, this recent booklet that came in the mail to my house, and I guess to everybody's house today, is great, and I urge, if you didn't get one, I urge you to find one, I'm sure there's some around here that we could find for you, about all the activities that you can do in Kerrville, and all of which are sponsored by some part of the city. Thank you.
Are you going to talk about the open house in your comments?
Yes.
Okay. Any others? If not, we will move to item number two, which is the Visitors and Citizens Form, and I don't see any speakers that are signed up to speak in this particular, you're shaking your head yes? Okay, I didn't see it on here, so, all right, okay. Any citizen with business not scheduled on the agenda may speak to the City Council. Prior to speaking, you fill out the form, City Council may not discuss or take any action on an item, but may place the issue on the future agenda. The number of speakers is limited to the first 10, and each speaker is limited to four minutes. Ms. Lipscomb?
Carolyn Lipscomb, 909 Light Drive, and what I have is a question. In driving up and down Holsworth, I'm seeing these mammoth forms that are going to be going in the ground, it looks like for light poles, similar to what's out on I-10, and I didn't know if those were going to be light poles, or if they're going to be new transmission lines, are the towers coming down? I'm just nosy and wanted to know.
We can answer questions of fact. Mr. Hoppy?
Yes, ma'am. My understanding, I believe what is being referenced there is K-Pub is redoing their transmission lines, they're moving from the scaffolding type to the monopole that you see, similar to on, what is located on I-10.
So it is going to be transmission lines and not lighting?
I believe that's what you're referencing, yes, ma'am. I know that they're doing some work.
Yeah, because there's several of them, it looks like, going along. Thank you, I was just curious.
Item number three is a presentation of Officer of the Year Award, and I will not reveal who it is, Chief Knight.
It will be quite a surprise.
Yes, it will.
Mayor and Council, thank you for the opportunity to honor one of our officers who was selected as the Kerrville Police Department Officer of the Year, Officer Austin Beal. Officer Austin Beal is a three-year veteran of the Kerrville Police Department and currently assigned to the Field Operations Division. As a patrol officer and has performed his duties in an exemplary manner. Since being assigned to patrol in January of 2015, Officer Beal has conducted numerous investigations of criminal activity, offenses, and has enacted and affected a significant number of on-view arrests, a testament to his proactive approach to policing. Officer Beal is a field training officer due to his high level of performance in all areas. He's a proactive and aggressive field training officer and has superior interpersonal communication skills, which he uses to good effect in developing leads and connecting with the public he serves. Austin is a Special Operations Unit Tactical Officer and has assisted our Special Crimes Unit on several occasions. Officers wear many hats in many organizations, and Austin is no exception to that. When our agency began the implementation of new physical fitness and wellness assessments for hiring and ongoing officer safety, Austin became our department's project lead, completing a challenging multi-part physical fitness instructor's certification and administering the testing department-wide to establish our baseline standards. Officer Beal regularly goes above and beyond what is expected of a patrol officer in an effort to deliver the highest level of service he is capable of to the Kerrville community. And he consistently exhibits this level of performance and drive to the citizens of our community every day. Austin is active in supporting department efforts for community involvement and proactively seeks out volunteer opportunities. He's an active participant in the mentoring program at Nimitz Elementary School as a mentor for at-risk children, providing guidance, support, and positive role models for these students. Officer Beal's interaction with the citizens we serve promotes a positive impression of law enforcement, effectively bolstering the legitimacy of our service to our citizens. His actions daily are grounded in service to others, justice, and fundamental fairness. He consistently performs his duties with professional excellence and brings great credit to him and the Kerrville Police Department daily. We honor him by providing him with the Officer of the Year Award, which, for our department, is the presentation of the Police Commendation Award. So, Officer Beal.
Officer Beal, if you would come by and shake our hands, we certainly want to tell you we appreciate you so much.
Thank you, ma'am.
Good job, well done. Thank you.
Thanks, sir.
Thank you, Chief, and congratulations, and thank you, officers who came, we appreciate your support. Item number four is the Consent Agenda. Does any member of council wish to have anything removed from the consent agenda? If not, I will entertain a motion to approve.
I'll move.
Ms. Summerlin?
I move to approve the consent agenda.
We have a motion, do we have a second?
I don't have a button.
You don't have a button?
No.
I don't have a motion or a second button.
Oh.
Something's about, it's not working.
Technical difficulties? Shall we just continue as is? Do you know why we would not have a motion? Okay, we'll do it by the raising of hand from now on, the rest of the meeting?
Excuse me, who is the second?
Do we have a second?
I'm second.
No, it's coming, I think.
Thank you.
All right, we have a motion by Ms. Summerlin, we have a second by Mr. Vogel. We are ready to cast our votes.
I don't see any place to vote. All in favor?
All in favor. Motion carries five to zero, I'm waiting to be obedient, okay?
I don't want to be.
Okay. We will move forward to item number 5A, Ordinance Number 4, Amending the Zoning Code for the City of Kerrville, Texas by revising the definition of home occupation and adopting regulations for that use containing a savings and severability clause, providing for a maximum penalty or fine of $2,000 ordering publication, providing other matters related to the subject. Mr. Paxton, welcome back to the land of the living after your flu.
Thank you, ma'am. As council is aware, this started in spring of 2017 to discuss the revision of the Home Occupation Ordinance to allow for home occupations as an accessory use to residential use. As you can see in the draft ordinance in front of you, home occupation is defined by any activity carried out for gain by a resident which results in the provision or manufacturing of services and/or goods, and is conducted as an accessory use in a dwelling unit. Page two of the ordinance, you have several different requirements of a home occupation and general provisions. One of the recent changes since our last discussion was the allowance of one employee other than the occupants of the residence may office at the premises, so that would allow an additional employee that supports the home occupation that does not live at the residence. There's certain uses that are restricted as part of a home occupation, as we discussed in our workshop before. Restriction of sales of any, to any customers that visit the residence, vehicle repair, breeding and boarding or kenneling of animals, repair and services of large appliances or equipment, any manufacturing or assembling, sale of firearms, ammunition, or explosives, medical offices or clinics, barber and beauty shops, including nail salons. And with that, I'd be pleased to answer any questions.
Drew, I had a question, a couple of questions. I guess number 3A, sales of any kind would include Mary Kay? I just wanted to make that public, because it is sales.
If that's, if the customer is coming to the home, yes, it would.
Just wanted counsel to understand that would be included. And under 2G, the storage or use of toxic, explosive, flammable, combustible, corrosive, radioactive, or other hazardous materials is prohibited. And I don't want to be overly particular here, but if a resident stores pesticides or paint, and they do that, residents do that, as opposed to someone who's in the commercial line of doing that kind of work, do you need to say in commercial volumes or anything?
With this being specific to the home occupation, there would not normally be that clarification between the two. Homeowner naturally would have some of those chemicals around the home, but of course, the home occupation to support that business would be a commercial volume.
So you see what I'm saying?
Right.
If you have 10 or 12, or if you have five gallon or 10 gallon things of paint or pesticide, they may just say it's for residential use, for my own use, but if you don't see any problem there, I'm just pointing that out to council.
Could we back up, Mayor, about the Mary Kay business?
Mm-hmm.
Mary Kay businesses then are illegal going forward?
Right. The sale of the goods at the home.
At the home.
Right.
At the home, not Mary Kay parties.
Oh, no.
Correct.
This is all sales in your residence.
In the residence, right.
Home occupations. The other question.
Wait a minute, because is that, I mean, the Mary Kay party is going to fall under sales in the home, right?
If they were invited to the business owner's home, yes. If you were going to someone else's home to put on that Mary Kay party, or to bring the goods to their house as a delivery, that would be allowed.
Okay, I think they should be allowed, but based on what we've got written in there, home occupation is just the activity for gain, so if I'm holding the party, I'm getting a gain out of it. As a host, I'm going to get a portion of what occurs there that night, so does that not put it under there?
Mr. Hayes?
I mean, if you want to drill down and be that specific, we'd have to, I mean, I don't know, I don't know how Mary Kay.
I want the law to be clear.
Well, but I don't know how Mary Kay works, I guess, you know, if they're getting a gratis, you know, some minor.
Like Tupperware, there's a bunch of products like that, but I don't think most people would have any trouble making that distinction. I just wanted to make sure, following the mayor's question, that we weren't leaving the impression that no businesses like that were legal in Kerrville anymore.
Right.
I can't imagine that anybody would have trouble telling the difference between a Mary Kay party that happens at your house once a year and a home occupation.
But you could, under this ordinance, prohibit all of those kinds of things, and that's why I brought it up. I don't know what council would like to do, or what you might suggest for what's happened in other communities, but, you know, it is true, we have, I walk where, I used to walk when I was in shape, they had parties and cars were lined up on both sides of the road, it wasn't the city limits, it wasn't often, that I know of, but nevertheless, it happened three, four, five times a year. And they had sales in the home, and they do it, albeit perhaps a pyramid business, it is a business.
In general, the provisions for home occupation are to keep that repeat business, so that it's not a retail store with customers driving by during certain hours of the day, but.
Do we need to change that, Mr. Hayes, where it says of any kind, or of a repetitive nature, something to that effect?
That's up to y'all. I mean, this is first reading, and, I mean, we've workshopped this, we tried to get it, you know, as specific as we could.
I understand.
But you're right, if they're doing a Mary Kay party as part of a home occupation, then that would be prohibited, under the way it's written now.
Mr. Ferguson?
Yes, I have a question about the one person that can be office in the home, one employee, and I can't find it exactly in here, but maybe.
2A.
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 Yes, 2A.
The thing I would like to think about is the situation where you might have more than two people doing something on separate days. I think keeping it to one a day is fine, and just fine with me. And I thought about it, and the thing that I ended up coming to my mind is that instead of one person, one full-time equivalent.
So I see what he's saying.
Right.
If you have a home health person, and you have one one day and one another day, but I think saying one employee is definitive enough.
Right. And again, the intention goes back to the impact on the neighborhood. If you had multiple employees daily coming to the home.
No, no, you wouldn't have them daily.
Right.
But you might have them coming across the week, you might have two or three.
Right.
Okay.
But if you say one.
Can you think of a business that, can you think of a specific?
Yeah, I've had some, where I had somebody working, and there were two or three people that worked for me, and so-and-so would come in on Monday, and somebody on Wednesday, and somebody on Friday.
Oh. As part of a home occupation?
Well, it turned out it was a home occupation, because my office was at home, so I guess that qualifies. I don't know if it would have met all the other requirements, haven't thought about it. But the point is, if it's one person, to me, that's one and the same person. And that's what I'm trying to get the thoughts out on.
Yeah.
It may be a bad idea, I don't know.
It says may office, would you, would you have thought those three people were officing in your house?
Well, I don't know whether they were or not, they used the office, now, does that, does that mean officing?
Mayor, if I might offer.
Yes, sir.
I think these are great suggestions on how we can further tweak the ordinance, if we can just kind of get them all out on the table, on second reading, we can bring back some of the language that might be able to address some of these.
All right, so we know what to, Mike is furiously making notes over there, so.
Okay, well, before we leave that point, then.
I'm sorry, I'll.
No, that's okay.
Mr. Broody?
Before we leave that particular one, I'm looking for the better understanding of why, if it's, my understanding of home occupation would be basically no employees. So, as soon as we open the door to one employee, that's in my head, turning that into a business, not a home occupation. So, I guess my question to council would be, why would we do that?
I had a recommendation on this, and I'll answer for myself, but I know of a particular instance where it happens to be an elderly man offices out of his home, and he has a lady that comes to do his books for him about three times a week, so she is an employee, and it doesn't influence the traffic or anything in the area, and I think that should be permitted. There were a number of people who approached me with that kind of scenario, being we have that kind of demographic here in Kerrville.
Except she's probably not technically officing.
Well, she works in his office, so I.
Right, but that's what I mean.
That's kind of what I was thinking.
Yeah, that's the difference between a, someone having a coworker, or a contractor, or someone coming to their home, home occupation location, and doing some work for them versus truly officing, like, having an office that's got a nameplate, you know, that's their space. And if, I would suggest that it be no employees that may office there, and you still have the example of you, that you just described allowable, because that's not an employee, I don't believe.
Do you think so, Ms. Trace? I did this because I brought it up before to staff, and this is what came out of it. Perhaps it was P&amp;Z's understanding as well.
And it was, the current ordinance reads that it does allow for one employee?
Yeah.
So that would be customary to Kerrville to have one employee for these occupations?
Yeah.
But we can clarify in the ordinance what officing means by definition.
Okay. And I don't object to that.
Okay.
On item number four, the city manager or designated shall make all determinations as to whether any aspect of a proposed home occupation complies with the requirements of this subsection. No problem with the ability of Mr. McDaniel to do that, but wouldn't it normally be the city attorney or the chief building official and something like that for code enforcement?
Well, usually, what we, and what I've seen us doing the last probably four or five years is always using the city manager and allowing him to assign the person, whether that's a chief building official, it won't be me, chief building official, some code enforcement officer, that gives him flexibility, gives him or her flexibility to do that.
Without changing the ordinance.
Right.
In case we change the titles of people.
Yep.
On the conditional use permit in that same item, if the city determines a proposed or existing home occupation does not comply, person engaged in the home occupation may submit an application for a conditional use permit. Are those identified anywhere? Would those be identified, what those, the conditional uses would be, or just anywhere?
Well, you'd avail yourself to the process that we currently have in the zoning code, and then, so you'd make an application, and, you know, as part of doing that, you sit down with staff, and you, they talk through kind of some conditions that they would recommend to P&amp;Z, and that's where it would start, it would go to P&amp;Z as a resolution, and there would probably be some staff recommendations in terms of conditions, and then P&amp;Z could consider those and even add to, or take away, and make a recommendation to council.
Okay. So just point out that there would be some flexibility.
Yeah, and that's just kind of an appeal process in case they want to move forward with it that way.
All right, if there are no more questions.
No, I've got some questions.
I'm sure, but, Mr. Broody?
Yeah, I just, sorry. So, some of this is just George Broody tilting windmills, but I'm just going to say again, I think we're missing the mark a little bit, having an opportunity to revisit this, and basically, we're trying to, as a general rule, trying to deal with overt distractions from the residential character, is that not right? I mean, that's really what we're trying to get at. And, you know, obviously, we spent a lot of time on this, and according to Mr. Batts, when he, I think it was a workshop, it was really going after two businesses, two specific instances, an auto repair person and someone displaying their art in their yard. And after all that, we come up with this ordinance, and I'm not really sure that I see where we've kind of moved the needle very far, other than giving us a little bit ability to go after these two. But having said that, some of the stuff that we're prohibiting, the activities or businesses, I guess you'd say, that we're prohibiting, hair, a barber is one of them, breeding of animals is another. It seems like that we're actually trying to regulate potential things instead of focusing on actual offenses. And the reason that's sort of a slippery slope problem is kind of like, well, in the case of dogs, a dog is potentially dangerous, could bite neighbors and whatnot, but we don't prevent someone from owning a dog. We enforce. We enforce, we take action when their dog actually does that, you know, does the biting or whatnot. Cars, sports cars can go twice as fast as a highway speed, but we don't tell people they can't own a car. We just tell them, when you're speeding, we're going to cite you for that. So, in the case of breeding dogs, what, what is our intent when we're trying to prevent someone from doing that as a home occupation?
Mr. Paxton?
Potential public nuisance of breeding animals. Ordinance currently allows up to four animals.
Four pets.
Four pets. So, obviously breeding, you'd have more than four pets. And with the noise, potential smells, that's commonly a prohibited item from home occupation.
Okay, but you kind of answered the part of the question in, in that answer in saying, we already regulate that they can only have four pets. So breeding in itself would be a difficult occupation and throwing it in here to no real benefit. Because we've already regulated that out. The noise and nuisencing aspect of things, presumably, we should be having that as a ordinance anyways. But what's the deal with the, the barber or that? What, what are we, what are we prohibiting that for?
Again, back to the, the traffic and the impact on the neighborhood. That came out through the planning and zoning discussions and the council workshops, that that was the direction the community wanted to go.
Okay, so...
To prohibit those.
So again, it's, it's, it's potential problems, not, there's nothing inherent with barbering that we're trying to prohibit.
In a residential area?
Correct.
In a home? In a home.
So, why are we attempting to get them on potential? What's that, what's that doing?
Yes, sir.
If I can add, so when, if you look at other cities, and I know that we're not other cities, we're Kerrville. But this is, all this is best practice. This, the, these are commonly excluded or not excluded in, in the home occupation ordinance because there have been issues that have arisen from those particular occupations. So, whether it's breeding or it's barbers, I personally have experienced those issues as home occupations, whether it's traffic or health issues. And it doesn't happen every day, you know, it, it doesn't. But, but this ordinance, what it does for us is it finally gives us an ability to basically enforce what, what we already had on the books. Where before we were, we had an ordinance, but the way that it was written didn't allow us to do it. So we're not really changing a whole lot here in terms of what was already on the books.
It's just given some teeth to be able to enforce.
Yes, ma'am.
Right.
Okay, well, to the best practices, barbering in particular is one that is considered one that is varied across the board simply because of what's common practice in that town. So, we don't even know how many people we're impacting with that one. We also don't know how many of those that are in town have impacted traffic in the, in that area because presumably, we don't have any complaints about that. If we had some, what would they be? So, we, I mean, I, I'm just saying, it seems like a, a stretch, an, an overreach to go inside covert activity and get people on potential, because, you know...
Yeah, let's, let's do this. Let's move forward with the public hearing and we may have some more conversation after we do that. The only other thing that you might want to address is if it's, you say, single family, it's not restricted to the, any zoning district. It's all zoning districts, correct?
Yes.
Does not place any restrictions on the type of dwelling unit in which it can operate. A single-family, a duplex apartment, et cetera, are restrict the use to any zoning district. If it's a residential transition, and that's in, you know, your opening remarks here. They, if it's residential transition and we have a house at the end of the block, the house at the end of the block, because it's a single-family residence, couldn't have this traffic and everything going on. In residential transition, they could, right down the street. Is that conflicting? That would be my only thought. Maybe we need to look at just residential and maybe you have an answer for that.
With the residential transition, you are going to have those varying uses. The primary use being single-family, they would have the option of falling under these provisions for an accessory home occupation.
They could.
If it were not a primary residence and it were just an office building or some other uses that are allowed in the RT district, they would be treated as the, more or less, the commercial business.
Yeah, but you see what I'm saying?
Right. And that, that is the, kind of the crux of the residential transition district, allowing that transition. And it is house to house or block to block.
Okay, we will assume the red, single-family resident don't want to do that. All right, at this point, this calls for a public hearing. At six thirty-five, I will open the public hearing. Mr. Segerman, did you wish to speak?
Yeah.
I'm sorry.
My name is Mike Segerman. I live at four thousand Comanche Trace Drive and I'm on the Planning and Zoning Commission. And to hopefully address some of George's questions and concerns. When the P and Z was, when this, when this started, when the, the situation was brought to us, George was right. There was the, the code enforcement have, was having a problem with one business. And I think that's why we began to look at this. But in, in the end of this thing and, and the reason, you don't wait till there's a problem and then you create a, a, an ordinance and then you go back and try to backdoor it with somebody. You create the ordinance to protect the neighborhoods now. My opinion is, is when you move into a neighborhood and, and that's where you're going to live, you expect it to be a neighborhood. You don't expect it to be a business district. You don't expect to have whatever business you want, whether it's a barber shop or whether it's a dog breeding facility or whatever it is. You don't expect that to be your next-door neighbor because you bought a home in a residential neighborhood and you expect it to be that. There are certain allowances in these residential areas for a home occupation business with very specific guidelines of what you can and can't do, including people coming in, employees and traffic. And that's the reason why we do this. We're not looking to covertly go after anybody. The reason why we started out to do this and, and create this ordinance was to protect the people that live in the neighborhoods because that's what they are. They moved into that neighborhood because it's where they live. It's where they raise their kids. It's where they go to work and go home every day and they expect it to be a residential neighborhood. That is the reason for the ordinance and that is the reason why we try to do this, to protect. We, we need to protect the people that live in the neighborhoods. And we're not really trying to protect the people that want to put a business in their home. We're giving them the opportunity to do that under very specific guidelines. So you don't encroach on your next-door neighbor's personal liberty and their right to be there and expect to be a neighborhood. And that's why we do it.
Okay, Ms. Amrul, I'm sorry, I didn't see you. You wish to...
I, I was just going to point out that no, no current businesses are expected to be put out of business by this ordinance.
Right.
In fact, they're grandfathered.
Yes.
They become legal non-conform uses.
That's not correct.
In item number five...
Well, it's what it says at the end.
Not, they're for, what is it, just one? Is it just the vehicle maintenance that's not, or is there a second one?
A home occupation legally in existence.
Vehicle repair is the only one that we don't grandfather? Or is it hair? The barbers aren't either, right?
No, it didn't say anything about the barber.
Firearm, vehicle repair and service of any type, repair services for large appliances and equipment and uses involving the sale or repair of firearms, ammunition or explosives are not legal non-conforming. Everything else would be.
Right.
All right, anyone else for the public hearing? If not, we will move into regular session again at six thirty-eight. And I will ask, I just have that one last question for Drew. Where did you go? Let me give you that one last scenario and, and fill me in and correct me. In residential transition, let's take an instance that we will be discussing later on in the meeting. We have a residence that is converted to a business at the end of one block. At the other end, it's a single-family resident. Under this particular ordinance, because this applies to all zoning areas, the single-family resident could not have more than one employee. They could not have increased traffic. They could not do these things. The one at the end could have several employees.
That's correct.
So, my question to council and to you would be, does it make sense to, to do that then? Or should we limit it to residential or residential cluster? In your experience, Mr. McDaniel?
Well, I think you make a good point. And so I'd like to look at that between now and the next reading.
Okay. All right. Second or not for council? Whoops, I see a red dot. Mr. Brody?
Yeah, so, just to get at kind of what Mr. Segerman brought up was the business of the property rights, the personal property rights of those, the neighbors. These, all these people that have a home occupation live in those neighborhoods as well. They're not moving in. They're already there and estab, and they're using it. And they have as much right to liberties as everybody else. My point hasn't been that we don't, that we avoid regulating the appearance of the neighborhood. My point was that if what a neighbor is doing has no, basically live and let live. If what the person is doing has no impact on anybody other than them. In other words, whatever they're doing is in the confines of their home. There's no noise, there's no smell, there's no visible anything. Why are we attempting to regulate that? And at the same time, we're allowing them to put a business sign in their front yard. No matter how big, it's still a obvious distraction from a residential neighborhood. So, that would be one of the standards that we put in this that I would like to see get reviewed as to why we're, we're allowing that. It's not a potential distraction. It's a real distraction from the residential neighborhood. And the employee thing, I think, is a, is another one that I'd like to see looked at as far as, it's, it's a real distraction if you're having someone have their place of business where they're going to work at residence.
Let me kind of do this if I could, so we got a lot on the agenda, I understand. So item number two A, and Mr. McDaniel, tell me how we can handle this best. You have a question about two A. You have a question about two J, which is the signs. And you have a question about three H or three C and H? How many under three?
I think it was just two that I picked out.
C is the breeding, boarding of dogs and H is the barber shops.
Correct.
C and H.
About Mary Kay?
Yeah, I mean, you got, you brought up the Mary Kay, the, the whole multi-level marketing stuff.
Well, I think he said that that would be adjusted. I think we can fix that with the language, you said, if it's just two or three a year. It's not a continual sales thing.
Yeah, I'm, I'm hearing a general consensus that you'd like to address that.
Yeah.
But before we move on the sign item, I think there's differences of opinion on the council on that item. And I want to make sure we get some clear directions so we don't do this again next time, so...
Right. That's what I'd like to do, is kind of get a consensus. Is that fair?
Yes, ma'am.
On each of these items? If I could get just a council consensus, which we can do according to our procedural rules. Three A, I mean, two A, to, to change the one employee. I, I think it's okay? Vince thinks it's okay?
I think it's okay, but I don't mind considering changing that word to FTE.
Okay, I got you. And Mr. Ferguson?
I, I would prefer FTE.
Okay. So, I think we have a general consensus there, all right? And item number J, two J.
Two J?
Two J, yes, sir. About the signs, Mr. Vogel, do you have a, a problem with the signs?
No.
Okay. Mr. Brody, yes? I don't?
No.
You don't? Mr. Ferguson does?
No, I do not.
Okay. Item number three, A, can we fix that with language? We decided we can do that? Okay, item number three, C, breeding, boarding and kenneling of animals restricted. Mr. Vogel?
That's okay.
Okay. Mr. Brody, no? I say it's okay to leave.
Okay with me.
Mr. Ferguson?
Yes, it's okay with me.
And I think that's all that we had.
H? Were we going to look at H?
I'm sorry.
Barber shops?
Yes. Mr. Vogel? Barber and beauty shops?
Yes.
It's okay? Mr. Brody, no? I say it's okay to leave.
It's okay with me.
Okay?
It's okay with me.
All right. So we have our direction?
Thank you.
All right. So we will not vote on this on first reading?
You need to vote, you need to vote on this ordinance.
Yeah.
It's going to have two readings and a...
First reading?
Yeah.
With the corrections?
With those, subject to those, bringing those things back.
I'll move approval of, on first reading, subject to revisiting the items you listed.
The amendments, okay? Do we have a second?
We have her buttons back.
We have our buttons back? Okay. And she posted? Do we have a motion? Do we have a second?
Last second.
Mr. Ferguson, we have a motion and a second to approve ordinance number two oh one eight oh four as amended on first reading. We are ready to cast our votes. Are all votes in?
Yeah.
Thank you.
Okay, I'm sorry, it carries four to one. Thank you. Item number five B is ordinance number two oh one eight dash oh six amending the city's zoning code by changing the zoning district for several properties making up an approximate two point nine six acres, more commonly known as eight twenty-nine, eight thirty-seven and eight fifty-one Clay Street North and six nineteen Murda Street North by removing the area from the residential transition zoning district and placing it within the twenty-one N zoning district containing a cumulative clause containing savings and severability clause providing for maximum penalty of fine of two thousand dollars or in publication, providing other matters relating to the subject. Mr. Paxton?
Thank you, Mayor. This is a zone case that went before the Planning and Zoning Commission. As recommended from the Planning Commission, denial of the case. We are looking at four different lots along Clay and Murda Streets. As you can see on your map here, there's one lot on Murda Street, three that face Clay Street. The two property owners joined this case together. Mr. Motherall owns the shopping center at eight twenty Sydney Baker and a couple of the lots behind it and was looking to extend parking into those lots. And that's the beginning of this request to go to commercial zoning. Mr. Ray owns the adjacent lot on Clay Street, is looking to do commercial use on that as well. Or asking for N twenty-one zoning, and that is consistent with the zoning that's on Sydney Baker. So going from RT to N twenty-one. Based on the future land use plan. Sorry, this gets kind of blurry. You can see there. Just one second. We are looking at the lots about here where the pointer is. The current future land use plan does show this area as commercial, including the area across the street. This is the intersection where we have a transition to residential property there. Existing uses around it are zoned RT. To the east, there is zoned in, or twenty-one N. West, across Clay Street and both sides, north and south along Clay, Clay Street are zoned RT. Not sure if you can read that on your screen, but it shows the comparison of uses between the RT and N twenty-one, allowing those commercial uses. Notice was published in the Kerrville Daily Times. We did send twenty-four letters out to property owners that were within two hundred feet. We had twenty-one responses in protest. Five of those letters were within the two hundred-foot notification area. And if you can see on your screen, several letters, or several properties, a small green dot on those. Those are the properties that we did receive letters nearby that were in opposition.
Did you give us the content of those letters or the general gist? Did you say? Did I miss that?
No, ma'am, sorry. The opposition was the extension of the commercial area into the residential neighborhood. Again, this Clay Street is zoned RT to the north along Rimshell. And Wheelis is zoned R one. And the neighborhood obviously felt that they were continuing the residential use, even though there is some transition along Clay Street. Again, January eighteenth, Planning Commission recommended denial. On the February second Planning and Zoning Commission meeting, the commission did request that staff bring back a possible amendment to the code to allow a conditional use permit in any zoning district for commercial parking. Again, that would be back through the Planning and Zoning Commission and City Council on a case-by-case basis. With that, would you please answer any questions?
Any questions? I, by council, I don't see any, but I'd be happy to entertain any mis...
I'd have, do you want me to go back and push my button?
That's okay, that's all right.
So, this, this ordinance has to come to us, but Planning and Zoning... So this, this ordinance has to come to us, but Planning and Zoning recommends that we deny.
That's correct. Thank you, Councilmember. Part of the due process is Planning and Zoning did give their recommendation to council for the vote. There is still requirement for a public hearing, and then take action on the ordinance before you.
And I did, I did watch the meeting, as I'm sure several of you did as well. And I understood what, what all transpired at the meeting. I did follow up with Ms. Consell on a possible conditional use permit, which was suggested by Planning and Zoning for design, and I think that's a good idea. And just a reminder to the public that if there is something like that approved and passed to us, a conditional use permit, whether it's this item or any other item, can be regulated by the Planning and Zoning and City Council with certain prerequisites to that.
That's correct.
Okay. Any other questions?
I just put my thing in, but am I supposed to, if I'm just making comments, do I, do I do it before or after the public hearing?
Let's do it after the public hearing. Maybe it'll, maybe you'll hear it there.
That, that works for me.
Okay. All right. It's six, one half dozen of the others. So this calls for a public hearing. At 6:51, we will enter into the public hearing. I have a number of individuals who have requested to speak. The first is Gary Franklin. If you'll approach the podium. It just changed. Now it's Larry Eskridge. Did we change our list?
Oh, she clicked on Gary.
She made him.
Oh, I see. I got you.
Larry Eskridge, 1,000 Rimshell council members. My concern, even though I'm not immediately adjacent to the possible rezoning things, is that if this goes commercial, right now, one of the, I'd say kindly, traffic problems in Kerrville is the width of Rimshell from the intersection at, oh, well, about three, two-thirds of the street. Two cars meeting, one of them has to drive on or off the shoulder. And the entire street has supposedly been set to be repaired for three, four years now, and it's not, but it is a traffic hazard. You can't go out, pick up trash, do weed eating without taking your life in your hands some days. And it's just my concern that this going commercial will be an unintended consequence of additional traffic in that bad area. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Dr. Diane Fitch?
Hi. I am reading the statement from Wayne Franklin. He, he spoke at the last meeting, but he's recovering from the flu, so I'm standing in. Good evening, council members. My name is Wayne Franklin, happily residing at 916 Rimshell. I also represent two Clay Street residential properties, 819 and 821 Clay Street. The proposal to rezone Upper Clay Street transitional residential to N21 would bring Sidney Baker commercial business to our quiet Clay Street, and certainly would not reflect the intended Kerrville 2050 future vision or transitional residential areas. This specific transitional residential area is a long block, starting at Burnett, having 13 homes, as well as a lovely, well-maintained retirement residence community of about 40-plus homes at the head of Clay Street at Murda Street. This is our Clay Street. All business venues, including the Lutheran Church Counseling Center and the new church further up Clay Street in a former residence, retain the, retain the look like a residence format as required in transitional residential, as well as the low-traffic footprint. There are no sidewalks either side of Clay Street in this area. Being close in, residents do indeed walk or scooter, and of course navigate in the street. Can you imagine all the impact N21-style traffic would bring to this quiet street? I have heard various references to parking typically accessing via Clay Street. The Soaring Dragon Restaurant Strip Mall already has roughly 50 extra-wide parking slots facing Sidney Baker. Even at peak dinnertime recently, about 40% of the parking spaces were empty. I cannot understand what would be parked in such a large area proposed by Mr. Motherall and Mr. Ray at the last Planning and Zone Commission meeting. Mr. Ray said he wanted parking, or to put something in there, maybe low-cost housing. I'm confused. Again, this doesn't align with the Kerrville 2050 vision for transitional residential close-in, which provides easy access walking to our town-centered facilities. As we certainly are aware, changing the way the landscape appears, it becomes nearly impossible to change back. I sincerely feel these proposed changes would not enhance our Kerrville. Thank you, Wayne Franklin.
Thank you. Oh, David Lipscomb?
David Lipscomb, 909 Lake Street. Mayor and council, I want to thank you for this opportunity to offer a few of my observations concerning when adjacent to single-family housing, parking lots do not make good neighbors. First, there's no way to predict the traffic volume and/or the associated traffic noise. Second, lighting from vehicles or overhead lights in the lots themselves tend to disrupt the neighborhood tranquility. Excuse me. Third, on purpose or by accident, parking lots become trash dumps. Too often, drink cups, papers, food scraps, baby diapers litter the parking lots and adjacent neighborhoods. Fourth, out of necessary and nearby businesses, parking lots often become home for trash dumpsters, which attract nighttime creatures, both two- and four-legged variety. In addition to the required trash collection by noisy trucks during off-hours. Fifth, allowing parking lots in a single-family neighborhood requires careful consideration for a precedent to be set that would adversely affect other Kerrville locations. In summary, it seems the best course of action would be to deny the request, if for no other reason, consider the comprehensive plan process as in underway right now. And as a report from the Kerrville Planning Department pointed out, that could be part of the overall discussion. And in closing, I have been authorized by Carolyn to say that she approves of the previous comments.
That's really safe right before Valentine's Day. Okay, thank you. Mary Lee Stewart?
I'm Mary Lee Stewart. I'm a native of Kerrville and live at 600 Murda Street, which my family moved into in 1940. Oh, I'd like to throw all this out and start talking, but I'm going to say, this spot zoning could open the door to having more of Clay Street going away from residential transition. It's, please save our quiet, peaceful residential neighborhood. As they say, don't let the camel get his nose in the tent. I suspect there's more than one business on Sidney Baker that would like to expand their parking onto Clay Street and possibly Earl Garrett. Nobody's thought about that. This area, 700, 800 block of Clay Street, is defined by Kerrville 2050, highlighted category of high priority, affordable, attainable housing at an 89% rating. I want to stress, these are your words. It's a high priority at 89%. That was the fourth rating after infrastructure and a few things like that. Here's a quote from the website. "Incentivize improvements of older housing stock, more and smaller options for seniors besides assisted living, including rentals, housing stock that fits income levels of working people, mixed-use housing downtown or within walking distance of retail and services." I think this describes the 700, 800 block of Clay Street perfectly. 853 Clay Street belongs to my neighbor of over 50 years. She's Ramona Reeves, who just lost her husband, who also lived there all this time. They raised four children in this home. And this sentence comes from page seven of the Planning and Zoning Packet, "Under adverse impacts on neighboring lands." Consider that the rezoning would further isolate a single-family home on the southeast corner of Murda and Clay. That's the little lot that's there all by itself, isolated by Mr. Ray and Mr. Motherall, protection for which has incrementally, excuse me, has been decreasing with the encroachment of non-resident uses in the vicinity. I call this spot zoning. And the last thing, I'll be quick. The definition of District 21N was Sidney Baker leading into the, the central city north of Burnett. And it states, "It should not adversely affect the adjacent residential areas through the development of incompatible businesses." That's all. Thank you.
Yes, ma'am, thank you. The last one is Julie Reeves, and I don't believe she's here.
I'm Julie Reeves tonight.
All right, Julie?
Julie Reeves' mother is here, and I'm going to read the letter that Julie Reeves wrote that you guys, if you saw it in the newspaper, saw it. I would hope that all city council members and the mayor watched that meeting and saw the people come out that were going to be impacted in the neighborhood, so you would get an idea of what their thoughts were. This just says, "I'm writing to thank the Planning and Zoning Board members who patiently listened to us during the zoning meeting for Clay Street. Two businessmen who don't live on that street want to improve it by adding parking lots or commercial enterprises where homes once stood. I appreciate remarks of one board member who said that Clay Street residents shouldn't have to pay for past mistakes of others. We discussed issues that will arise if commercial activity is allowed or parking lots are allowed to extend through residential lots from Sidney Baker to Clay. The men wanting commercial zoning spoke about their needs, and the board listened to them and came to the decision that residential transitional zoning is the best for Clay Street. I hope that we are concerned about Kerrville as a whole. I wish, I wouldn't wish for anyone to lose the peace and quiet of their home due to business that belongs elsewhere, a parking lot, low-income housing, or whatever strikes one's fancy. The City Council will vote on the issue February 13th. I hope they will uphold the recommendation of the board. The 2050 plan for Kerrville indicates the desire to save residential neighborhoods close to town, and this is a great place to start. This is a precedent-setting event, so the decision to retain the residential transitional zoning will protect my neighborhood as well as others in the future, maybe yours. The death of any neighborhood is sad. Homes gone, trees gone, neighbors gone, replaced with noise, traffic, light pollution. People who bought homes on Clay Street, invested in Kerrville, some bought their homes over 50 years ago. They still live there and love their homes. Save this neighborhood, and you may protect others for the future. Julie Reeves."
Any questions for Ms. Reeves? Just kidding. All right. I have no, if there's no one else from the public that wishes to speak, then we will exit out of the public hearing at 7:03. Any questions or comments by council?
So I pushed my little button. I just asked it, sorry.
Mr. Rudy?
Okay, so, so this is just to more or less reiterate what's been said. There was, I mean, overwhelming support to deny this application for zone change at that P&amp;Z meeting, both from the public and from the commissioners. And just one little point of clarification, though. The, the agenda bill says that it was a unanimous vote to deny. It was actually four to one by the commissioners to deny that. But I, I would say, I forget who just made the point, but basically, doing this change of zone is sort of a precedent-setting thing, because if we were to go through with it, we're punching a hole in the RT zone. We're not just taking it adjacent. And so that, to me, is the more, the most troubling aspect of it. I mean, we're pushing boundaries all the time, but this one just punches a hole. And it's not just that one house, it's those residences on Murda that get somewhat orphaned by this, this maneuver. And so I would, I would, I'm going to end up voting to deny this as well, but I would go a step further. At P&amp;Z, they talked about a workaround, if you will, for the applicant's request, which was, at least on the surface, to just do a parking lot on that RT lot. And so it was presented that a conditional use, we don't have the tool of a parking lot being a land use that we could do. And I would say that having that as a tool is useful, but I think it was Commissioner Zubor on P&amp;Z that pointed out that even as a conditional use, a parking lot on its own probably should not be even a possible use in a residential zone, whether that's RT or not. Keeping in mind that an RT zone is, by definition, supposed to retain the appearance of a residence. And a parking lot without any structure there does not look like a residence to anybody I know. And so I would, I would kind of urge, I don't know if it's something I'm asking for consensus or whatnot, but I would urge that we direct that to, the conditional use, I think we should push for that not, that being something that is not even allowable in a residential zone.
Let's do this if we could, Mr. Rudy. I, I understand your point, well-taken. Let's, it's not this agenda item. Let's let it go through P&amp;Z with the, the comments that have been made and heard before, and then they'll have a chance, and council would have a chance, if that comes back to us, to, to do what we want to with it.
Okay.
Tonight, what I'd like is an up or down vote on this particular ordinance, which I think they're asking for. Okay, well, let's take one, Mr. Motherall, come forward.
Thank you for the opportunity to visit with you. The reason we are here is because the ordinances and, and things within the city now don't provide for any adjustments or, or other uses that go with the property. If you will look at your land use plan that was adopted, a part of the city's plan, this is already laid out in that plan as commercial use. Later, the city adopted the RT zone, overlaid the portion that was set up for commercial use with RT. So there's a conflict. And your staff pointed out to me that it's because of this, we had no choice but to apply for that change. Now, the adjacent property to the northeast, Mr. Ray's property, is already in use today as a parking area. So it is really a conflict in a lot of ways. And what we suggest is to look at what was done in the past. Unfortunately, also in this area, there are some very nice, well-maintained homes, and there are some that are very, very poorly maintained. As a matter of fact, it, they appear to be almost not safe. And so to call this a strict residential neighborhood is, at best, stretch. The, across the street from my property is a church. Adjacent to that uphill is the apartment complex. And our idea, our proposal, the people talking about traffic, and I can understand that concern, but our proposal. But our proposal was to fence the area with only access as an exit from the property. We don't want traffic running around through, back and forth, and, and that kind of thing. We are very cognizant of safety and of traffic. And the, the only alternative we had, with, given the ordinances that exist, is to make the request as we have done. We do not want to put some kind of business in there. That has never been the, the desire or the issue. We simply need the parking. Quite frankly, the, uh, military who is in our building there, they take twenty spaces. They have ten government vehicles, and the employees bring their own up in exchange. The, uh, Soaring Dragon uses about eight or nine spaces. The, uh, other tenants that are in there, when you add up two to three, uh, employees in each of those, you can add up very easily forty, uh, tenants, I mean, forty uses. And that can, and the gentleman that's made the statement about not, uh, being full during lunch hour, I got news for you. Go by at lunch, and you will see. The, uh, we, our tenants have complained about not having parking. And that's why we are here, and, and would appreciate your consideration in some way to make this feasible.
Okay. Thank you very much. Uh, Mr. Rudy, you had the light on to speak?
Yeah, just one last little thought. Just everybody, all together now, if you know the lyrics to Joni Mitchell's "Big Yellow Taxi," let's start singing it. Okay, so nobody knows it. You can go, yeah, you can go, you can go research that. We move on.
You got me. Um, I, I just wanted to point out that there was, um, conversation in the Planning and Zoning meeting that, uh, even though it may not be intended to be used for that right now, should something happen to Mr. Motherall, God forbid, or something else, that this could go to someone else, and N-21 would allow a car wash, or a lube change, or any manner of commercial businesses. So my hopes are that for everybody here, there will be a, a solution in the future that'll make everybody happy. And I think that's what, uh, the Development Office is working towards. And so, with that, I think we discussed this. Unless somebody else, you know, other lights on, I would entertain a motion on ordinance number 2018-06. To approve or deny, Ms. Summerlin?
Uh, Mayor, can I just ask this for a second? If I make this motion, I don't commit to vote for it, do I?
No, you make the motion.
Good. I'll, I'll move then, approval, but I'm gonna vote no.
That's perfectly clear.
Okay.
Okay, well, I need to undo my second, 'cause I'm not seconding approval. But I assumed that we were gonna...
She has moved. She has moved to approve.
Oh, you, but you did a second on that.
Yeah, and I seconded, and I seconded the wrong thing. I need to pull that off.
Well, I assumed there was no such thing as a negative motion.
You can move to deny.
You may move.
That's what I do. I'll move to deny.
Okay, let's change that then on your...
Hang on, let's be real clear.
Yes.
So you withdraw the motion?
Right.
Okay, we, we don't have a second. We don't have a second. Go ahead and make a new motion.
I'll, I'll move to deny the zoning change.
All right, we have a motion. Do we have a second?
Who would second that?
Mr. Rudy, we have a motion, and we have a second. All, just cast your vote.[847.71][847.71](Laughter)
And no means I'm against it, right?
The, the motion is to deny.
Motion is to deny.
So it's a yes to deny.
Then I mean yes.
There you go.
We've got it, folks. Don't leave yet. All right, and motion to deny carries five to zero. Motion, uh, item number six A, whoops, six A, is ordinance number 2018-05 amending Chapter Six, advertising Article Two signs of the City of Kerrville Code of Ordinances to add pole banner signs as an authorized sign and providing regulations thereof containing a savings and severability clause providing for penalties not to exceed $2,000, ordering publication, providing an effective date, and providing other matters related to the subject. Mr. Paxton?
Thank you. The ordinance before you has been discussed by the Planning and Zoning Commission a couple times, and it's here before council. With a pole banner defined as a banner that is mounted on a private light pole with an operational light. One pole, pole banner per acre. An additional pole banner would be allowed at the full second acre and so on, with a maximum of fifteen pole banners, with a weather-resistant material, as we talked about in our last discussion. That the banner be mounted, that the pole be mounted in concrete, the banner itself mounted durably at the top and bottom of the banner, not greater than twelve square feet, mounted with a minimum of seven-foot clearance from the bottom of the banner to the ground, and a maximum of thirty foot from the ground. With that, be pleased to answer any questions.
And, uh, council, this is a second reading, um, on this ordinance. Do I have any discussion? I don't have a red light on. Mr. Rudy, you had...
Yeah, I'll, I'll go ahead and start the discussion. So, um, yeah, part of the ordinance, part of the sign ordinance stipulates that, um, any one sign may be encompassed by multiple definitions and may be subject to regulations in multiple sections of the article. So, we've got a, we've got a banner now, or we had a banner. Uh, we have, had a flag, and now we have a pole banner, all of which are technically defined as banners. So, with that statement there, a pole banner could be confused as a banner. The banner has a restriction on it that's placed as, uh, it's only allowed one per property. And a pole banner, um, has the, whatever we're proposing, which is, you know, based on acreage and whatever. So, the fact that it's falling under both means a pole banner technically is a banner and only allowed to have one. So, my suggested amendment, which is the same one I brought up last meeting, would be to, I emailed it to all of you, so you at least see what I was gonna be discussing tonight, but basically, um, the banner, the definition for banner currently states, um, "Flags are distinguished from banners for the purpose of this article." So that makes them mutually exclusive definitions. And my suggestion would be to make this say, uh, "Flags and pole banners are distinguished from banners for the purpose of this article. Therefore, they would be mutually exclusive and would not fall under two different rulings of the thing," which I assume, well, I'm counting on being able to clean up any possible discrepancy there.
Okay.
One other amendment is not so much important as much as it just pulls out a redundancy, is in the proposed amendment, I guess under exempt signs, it says, uh, you know, it does the whole part about pole banner, and it says, number one, I guess, is "Made of material designed to withstand the weather for at least thirty days," which is nice and acceptable, but the last one, I think it says, um, number, I guess it's number five, says "Remain in condition that is not ripped, torn, or faded," which seems to get at the same thing, so...
Not quite.
Not quite.
From an enforcement standpoint, number one is talking about the material to be installed must be capable of withstanding weather for thirty days. Number five is long-term enforcement, that if it becomes damaged, tattered, ripped, or torn, it must be removed.
Okay.
So you're, you're, you're saying, I'm sorry, but you're saying as a, the material, we don't state the material.
Correct.
But your definition is something that can withstand, so not, like, some...
Right. We're not getting to a specific material, but something that is weather resistant.
I got you.
So we've set a standard for material to be installed, however long-term. Obviously, one would hope that it would last more than thirty days to begin with.
Right.
If they last up to a year and becomes torn or tattered, then it would have to be removed.
And we, we don't have, like, specific material. We wanna say, we just wanna say that, so it kinda leaves it broad.
That's correct.
That's, I mean, that works for me.
Okay.
So, I guess I'm, I'm just saying the one, the one little amendment is, and for the reasons I gave, is what I'm suggesting.
Okay, just to, just to make it clear as to where it appears. I had given to each of you, and it's just for consideration, and Mr. McDaniel in Planning, we hate to do this to you on second reading, but we thought, we were thinking slowly. But I heard it discussed in Planning and Zoning Two, and I'm just throwing it out there for y'all to chew on. One last thing to think about, where it says, uh, "Pole banner, a banner sign that is mounted to a private light pole with an operational light." My food for thought, a banner sign that is mounted to a private light pole or other commercially acceptable decorative metal pole, and you can say at least twelve foot, at least a four-to-five-inch base, four-inch outer diameter, and a .125-inch wall thickness. You may or may not say that. I got that from websites that were particular to pole banners. And y'all had some discussion, and I, I say this because I drove through Fredericksburg, and they had some beautiful decorative, uh, round or riveted poles that had pole banners. They were acceptable weight, dimension, everything. And they were not light poles, but they were beautiful. So I throw that out to, to council. I don't see why we couldn't say, add that, a banner that is mounted to a private light pole or other commercially acceptable decorative metal pole. You could leave it there if you wish, or you could give the dimensions.
So the, the purpose of that would be to allow people to put up poles just to put banners on?
Just for a banner, correct, uh-huh.
I, I think I know what you're referring to, and I think they look very nice.
And you still have this base, you know, definitions and everything, so they wouldn't be clustered, so is that, if that's a consensus, then...
Am I gonna make a motion?
Oh, you may, may make a motion if there's no other discussion.
I'd like to make a motion, then.
Yes, sir.
I have a...
I'm sorry, Ben, you, you did.
Go ahead.
After looking, I was looking at a lot of the businesses in our, in our town just to see how, what size they are. I think we might be a little too restrictive on this, because most of our small, or I wouldn't say most, a lot of our small businesses are less than two acres, but they have multiple light poles. And I don't wanna restrict them to one pole banner for their property when they have five or six light poles. I don't know if we've taken that into consideration or not. Like Walgreens is a good example. They're less than two acres, but they have nine light poles, I believe. So they would be restricted to one pole banner, is that correct?
That's correct.
But let me ask this...
If that's what we want, then that's, that's what we want.
Yeah, I understand. That's what they came up with. I know it was kind of designed around Peterson Hospital, but would there be an occasion for a, a variance if somebody like Walgreens came and this was in place?
You could possibly look at a CUP, conditional use permit, to allow, but it's not part of the zoning code, right?
Right.
So, there's not, there, there's a variance process built into the sign code, but it's for undue hardship. Currently, it's not, the sign ordinance is not part of the zoning code, but most cities it is, and so that's probably something we'll be looking at as a follow-on activity from the comprehensive plan. But here we are, right? So, I think the idea here is, it's strictly a policy decision on the part of the council, but the idea is that, um, is to not have clutter.
Right.
Sign pollution, kind of a, but, you know, that's, beauty's in the eye of the beholder, so it's a policy decision.
And I think Planning and Zoning stated that, you know, maybe they have other signs or other things in the parking lots, so then you have this too as well, and it could become, as you said, clutter. Have we, I don't think we've had any complaints about that, but, so...
I do like them. I've driven through Frider, and I think the ones on their campus look great.
Yes, they're beautiful. Okay, you ready to make a motion?
Yeah, let me make a motion to, um, I guess we're passing, trying to pass the ordinance, uh, 2018-05, amending Chapter Six with two, uh, minor amendments. I'd motion that in, in the definition of a banner, we change the se, the last sentence to, to begin, "Flags and pole banners are distinguished from banners." And the definition of pole banner, I would go ahead and propose amending it to, uh, this proposal we just got handed, um, just allowing... Do I have to be specific with the words of that, as, as an acceptance, or can I give?
Yes.
I do, don't I? Okay, then, um, do I have to read it?
Yes.
Okay. Okay, so, so two amendments, the one, changing that second sentence in, under banner...
We got that.
Yeah, okay. So now, under pole banner, uh, change the words of it. Uh, the definition of pole banner to be a banner sign that is mounted to a private light pole or other commercially acceptable decorative metal pole, at least twelve feet in height, with a four-to-five-inch base, four-inch outer diameter, .125-inch wall thickness.
Okay, we have a motion. Do we have a second?
I'll second.
We have a motion, and we have a second. We're ready to cast our votes.
I can't see. Hold on, I'm sorry.
Motion carries five to zero on the second reading. Okay, item number seven A.
The motion is amended.
Yes, it's amended. Item number seven A, in the Kerrville Public Utility Board Loan Agreement to Extend the Maturity Date.
Uh, yes, Mayor, I'll take that one. So the, um, Kerrville Public Utility Board has already taken action on this amendment to, to our loan agreement.
I'm sorry, Mr. Hayes, is, do I need to recuse since I'm on the Board of CAPEB as well?
No.
Okay.
And so the, it's a very simple amendment. It extends the maturity date by three years. So instead of a ten-year loan, it's a thirteen-year loan. It also pushes back our first principal payment, uh, three years, beginning in 2023. This does also help us to, um, I guess, work around the, the maturity, not the maturity date, but the, the self-imposed cap of thirty-five percent on the, on the debt. That, along with the refunding that you all approved recently, where we got much better rates on some old bonds. Um, and so we still, and still have capacity. So this allows us to also then, you know, develop plans for Legion Lift Station funding, as well as TTHM funding, and perhaps even other things, uh, with, with the idea of the modeling that we had around, uh, what we would experience in the next few years in terms of adjustments to our rates. So, I'm gonna lay all that out for you all whenever we come back with a proposal on funding for the next two projects, meaning Legion and TTHM. Uh, we're actually meeting with the financial advisor and our engineer tomorrow to talk about the application and, and, uh, and try to refine that. So that'll come back to you for approval to submit the application.
Any questions by council?
Are we gonna be, are we gonna be taking some action today, or are you just telling us stuff today?
I'm just telling you that as you're, as you're considering the amendment to this. The action today is just the approving the amendment to the loan.
Okay, so we are, okay.
Yes.
That's what I mean. We're, we're taking some action today. We're approving that amendment.
To approve the amendment, yes, what he's asking.
You're, you're gonna give the city manager authority to sign this.
Correct.
That's the action.
Ms. Summerlin, I move approval.
Uh, I, actually, I did have something I wanted to say. It was more of a clarification. I'm gonna end up voting for this. Obviously, we need to do this to avoid the things that he described. But, um, it bothered me as I'm reading through it, because, um, it, it's another case of where I feel like we, as a council now, and taxpayers now, are having to, um, address something that could have been addressed before. We were, we were told when this loan went through, uh, we wouldn't have to raise certain rates and whatnot. And just as an apples-to-apples comparison, the annual rate of this is 2.4%. Because of how we're extending it out, and even before, it's gonna end up being, if my calculations are correct, something around an effective interest rate of about four and a quarter. Had we discussed that, that way back then, which is no fault of anybody sitting here, it might have been, it might have changed how we funded this particular project. So I'm very appreciative of you finding a way to address the debt limit cap, um, and basically pulling us out of that mess. So, thank you for that.
Okay. Are you done? It showed up here again. The rest of the line?
Oh, no, I'm sorry. I, I talked without getting cleared, I guess. I don't know.
Okay. All right, any other questions? If not, I would take a, a, a motion.
You got a motion, I think, on the table already.
Yes, Ms. Summerlin, do we have a second?
I'll second.
Motion and a second. Ready to cast our vote. Motion to approve carries five to zero. Item number seven B is authorize the purchase... Item number seven B, is authorize the purchase of a package pump station system for Pump Mechanical Technical Services LLC through BuyBoard, a local government purchasing cooperative at a price of $107,962 for the sports complex reuse pond and pump station project. Mr. Hoppe.
Thank you, ma'am, and council. I've got a short PowerPoint presentation to kind of walk you through this agenda item tonight. So, just to review the timeline for this specific element of the overall project, as you recall, from the December 2017 timeframe, we did a pre-bid and subsequent bid opening for a scope of project that ended up coming in above budget for the Curville Sports Complex Reuse Pond, specifically there off Holdsworth Drive. On January 9th, we came to the council and recommended that you all reject those bids, and we would go back and do some value engineering that we were already beginning to work on for the project engineer on that project. On January 23rd, we came back with the, the contract authorization for that redesign effort with the engineer for the project, and then here we are today on February 13th. We are, what we've done, and I'll go over the strategy a little bit later, but essentially we've broken the project up, we've done some value engineering on it, and we've broken it into separate components. What we heard from the contractors at the, throughout that process was that the project was a little bit more complex than what they were used to, and subsequently, we really didn't get some of the smaller local bidders, what we ended up was, was some of the larger bidders, and, and the prices went up. So, what we have tonight is the contract authorization specific for the pump station, but I want to go through the strategy for the other components, because what we'll see, we've got out on the street, basically just the construction of the pond piece and the, the land clearing, the site work, out on the street right now. We actually conducted a bid opening, or a, a, a pre-bid conference today. We did have three local bidders that were interested in that project, that, that were asking questions of that pre-bid. We anticipate the bid opening this Friday, February 16th, and then having that, hopefully, with some good bids for you guys, to hopefully award one of those on the February 27th city council meeting. So, again, let me just walk through a little bit of the proposed strategy that has been developed. Again, we've broken that project up into multiple components to really minimize the biddable component. The site work and pond construction, which right now we have an engineer's estimate right around $300,000, and you recall that the overall budget for this portion of the project was right at half a million dollars. Again, bid opening this Friday with anticipated bid award for the pond construction specific component on February 27th. The line work, what we are proposing for the line work, and I'll go over some pictures here in a minute to better describe what that includes.
I'm, I'm sorry, Ms. Hoppe, the Friday bid is just for the pond itself? Is that what you said?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay.
The pond construction specifically, and the site work. The line work, what we are proposing is to break that out. We've got an existing reuse distribution contractor, is very qualified to do that work, and we've got good estimates on what we think that the, you know, that, that segment of work would be, and so we can utilize a change order to have them do that work rather than including it and have a different bidder do essentially the same, the same work. And then tonight, the item that is, the only item that's really on your, your action agenda is the BuyBoard purchase of the actual pump station component, and that's relatively off-the-shelf component for $107,000, so, just, just under $108,000. And the reason that we've brought it to you tonight is because there's a pretty significant lead time. And so, by going the BuyBoard route and having, and that does include installation with a, a separate contractor, but there is an eight-to-12-week lead time, so by doing it this way, essentially, it's, there's no general contractor markup, there's a shorter lead time, it reduces about 60 days on the overall project, and it minimizes the complexity of the project that the general contractor would have to ensue. So, just look through a few pictures here. You can see the area in orange is an aerial view of the pond location there located, just off of Holdsworth. This is representative of the line work. That's essentially from Sweeper Lane and Holdsworth all the way back over to the pond area, and that is the element that we would be proposing would be a change order with Chromex, our existing reuse distribution contractor.
Okay, that's, that's from, that's not from Holdsworth to the pump, or it is?
Uh, it's actually, there is a small area that would come over from Holdsworth, and then it's also from the pump area down to Sweeper Lane.
Okay, because we had discussed that this week, and I thought those lines were already in.
Yeah, there's, there's two pieces to that.
The, the one all the way down, okay, so I stand corrected on that.
So, the yellow line represents what?
Everything we have to add inside there.
Yeah.
The distribution line.
Yeah, it's actually that black line that goes down there, but there's kind of an orange circle that sort of encapsulates all of that.
There, there it is.
But it's the black line that's going to be the change order?
Yes, ma'am.
Yes, ma'am.
Thin, black line.
That's correct.
Thin, black line.
And then this is the item that's actually on your agenda tonight. This is the, the BuyBoard item, which is basically just the pump station piece that you can see that's encapsulated within that, that orange circle there. So, talk a little bit about the overall budget, and where we are on the overall reuse system, and just kind of walk through where we're at. Again, design engineering, approximately $3 million in total. That, it does include the feasibility piece, as well as the design for both pond and pump station and the distribution component. As you recall, council awarded a reuse pond specific to MGC for just under 10 and 1/2 million. There was about a 1.5 million contingency that was added to that, or appropriated by the city council. The approved, we've had one approved change order for 146,000, just over that, for, specific to the reuse pond project. We do have two items that we're looking at that are proposed change orders. One is related to Third Creek Drainage, that's about 14,000, but we're honing in on what that estimate is. And then there's about a $40,000 skater alteration piece that we're also looking at, but again, we, we don't have the, the final component to that. But in total, you know, if those do move through, it's about 201,000, that's less than 2% of the overall pond bid award. On the construction side, the distribution mains, again, those were awarded to contract, to Chromex. That contract was approximately 4.8 million. Council appropriated an additional 709,000. We do have a, a proposed change order. We have not had really any existing change orders on that, but we do have a conglomerate change order, and there was some detail that was provided within your agenda bill and all the specifics on that. It totaled about 248,000, which is represented about 5% of the distribution-specific project.
Can I ask a question about that?
Sure.
Because we have that in here for the 248. I know several of them were explained as staff changes. 121,000 and 71,000 were staff changes. Some was by text dot, because they came back with some additional requirements. I do not understand the 78,000 for the HMAC overrun, which has to do with the depth of the pavement between Holdsworth, and I don't get that at all.
Yeah, there were several different areas. That, that's a, an area that was related to the depths that we actually found within the street pavement piece, so they, they do it by quantity, essentially, it's how that was originally bid. And so, as they dug up the ground, what they found is there were areas that were either less pavement or more pavement, and so the quantity essentially shifted as they went back in there and did the repaving of that.
When we were doing it from Legion down Meadow View?
Yes, in both of those areas, both in Holdsworth and along Legion.
Okay.
So, again, as you can see, within that budget area, we've highlighted, specific to the, the sports complex reuse irrigation pond, the three areas in orange combined for that half-a-million-dollar budget. And again, we've got an estimate there for the potential change order that would go to Chromex for that distribution line piece. You've got the 107,962, that is the piece that was on your agenda tonight for the BuyBoard contract, and then, again, we are hoping, we've got an engineer's estimate of 300,000 for that pond construction piece. We'll know more on Friday. So, that, that is the proposed strategy that we have for you tonight. Again, if you take the remaining expenses that we have for the overall project, in addition to what has been proposed via the, if completely accomplished via the change orders, we are anticipating about a 1.2 million dollar savings from what has been appropriated by the council, which was right at 23 million.
And I see that, that, that's about 500,000 what you've got there, but there's going to be crane service and installation as well?
I'm sorry, for which piece?
Okay, the 100,000 is the change order for the line, and you're going to have 107,000 or 108,000 for the pump.
Yes, ma'am.
And 300,000 anticipated for the pond.
Yes.
You're also going to have to, you said, have installation fees from someone?
No, the, the installation is included within the 107,000 bid for the pump.
Okay.
Yeah, so it's, it's, it's a, it's a turnkey element, basically.
I got you.
Yes, ma'am.
And the crane to unload it? That's what they said in the deal?
Yes, ma'am, it's, it's turnkey for that 107,000.
It is, that's included.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. So, that's right at 500,000.
Long as our bids come in good on Friday. Fingers crossed.
All right, any questions or comments by council?
Yeah, I just got a couple, I think, just to reiterate, so, what we, you know, what we originally bid for this piece, you've got the price down to 507, and is the only thing that resulting change or that we lost is the change of the pump? Is that, is that all we really modified in this design?
No.
We did reduce the redundancy of the pump.
Right.
It was, it, not being built on our typical utility scale, it's more of an irrigation-type scale. We also, there was a, we had a building that was essentially, you know, part of the, the component that would allow for additional storage, that, that we had to reduce out of that. There was a fertigation system that we had talked about last time that we did had to eliminate. In addition, there is a paved driveway that comes in, but it does not come all the way back to the pump station area. That is, that is being bid as an alternate, so if we just happen to get great bids on Friday, council does have the ability to potentially award that, that alternate piece for the driveway.
But functionally, everybody's okay with the result being what we needed to do, right?
Yes, ma'am.
And the only other question was, you, you talk about the change order, and, and I'm good with that, but we're, that's, that's a change order that's, doesn't have to be bid on because it's somehow linked up to the other stuff, or is it?
That's right.
I mean, how's that?
Yeah, those, those pieces are essentially, that, most of that has been bid already within the overall bid. It's line work that has to be done, or extensions that have to be put on there, and it, that is funding that's already been appropriated.
All right.
And I think the, the other thing is the electricity will be brought to the site by K-Pub, and I had asked Mr. McDaniel, as opposed to what? He said, as opposed to underground.
Yeah.
So, it'll be overground instead of underground to save some money there, but it's behind the trees, and it's not by the complex, so...
And it's parallel to the existing transmission line, so...
Okay.
We don't think that there'll be an aesthetic component that would detract.
Okay. All right. If there's no other questions, I will entertain a motion to...
I move approval of the purchase.
I'll second it.
We have a motion, and we have a second. We're ready to cast our vote. And the motion carries five to zero. Item number eight A, is regulating the use of portable electronic devices while driving. Chief, you've been working on this a long time.
Good evening, ma'am and council. I prepared a presentation on discussion and information points on this particular topic, may, was brought to the forefront with the previous council at the time that the previous legislature was in session and looking to regulate portable electronic devices while driving. We didn't know at that time what the, what the outcome of that particular legislation would be, so we sort of tabled that at that point in time, and I'd like to go over where we are now and where we would potentially like to go. Current law, as it stands right now, during the last legislative session, House Bill 62 was passed and signed into law, adding a new offense to the Texas Transportation Code, and that Transportation Code offense is section 545, point 4251, which is the use of portable wireless communication devices for electronic messaging. That went into effect on September 1st, 2017, this past year. The provisions at that particular statute are that it defines electronic message as a text message, in essence, and wireless communication devices as cell phones. It makes an offense, makes it an offense for a person to use a cellphone to read, write, or send a text message while operating a motor vehicle that is moving. It also requires the conduct to be committed in the presence or view of a peace officer or established by other evidence to be prosecuted. It creates a series of affirmative defenses to the texting statute, and also, one of the other issues with this particular point is that the motor vehicle has to be moving. It also provides that you can text if the vehicle is stopped, whether it's in, at an intersection or in traffic congestion, but it can't be moving.
Brilliant.
There are affirmative defenses, as was stated, that were brought forward with this statute. Use of a hands-free device is an affirmative defense. If you're utilizing the device in hands-free mode, then that's a defense to prosecution. If you, if you're using it as a GPS or navigation system, whether it's hands-free or not, that's a defense to prosecution. Reporting illegal activity or summoning emergency help or entering real-time traffic or road condition into a phone app such as Waze. Reading a text concerning something that the operator reasonably, reasonably believes to be an emergency. And sending an electronic message as part of an operator's occupational duties when communicating with a dispatcher or similar network service through a device attached to the view. Furthermore, it's an affirmative defense to prosecution if you are activating a function that plays music. Now, subsection D of the Transportation Code section adds two additional defenses, one of which is an operator of an authorized emergency vehicle or law enforcement vehicle texting while acting in an official capacity, and the other is an operator licensed by the FCC and operating a radio frequency device other than a portable wireless communication device, the CB radio. The punishments for the current legislation in effect. The graduated fine punishment of at least $25, but not more than $99 on the first offense. At least $100, but not more than $200 for subsequent offenses. Those are classy misdemeanors, those are handled at the municipal court level. It also provides for an enhancement to a Class A misdemeanor if the defendant caused the death or serious bodily injury of another while committing the offense. Challenges to law enforcement with this statute as it is in place. Current law prohibits an officer from inspecting a driver's cellphone to verify that the operator was texting. So, the officer makes a stop, believes he's observed the violation, he cannot inspect the cellphone or device to verify whether or not the officer, the operator was texting. Conversely, an officer can't inspect a driver's cellphone to verify that the operator was not texting, even if the driver consensually offers the phone for inspection to offer a defense, arguably, because the statute prohibits the officer from inspecting the driver's cellphone. The officer must not only see the driver texting, but must also be able to distinguish that the use of the phone or the device was being used for texting and not for any other purpose.
It's the Honor Code, I understand.
It is, and it's tough, tough hurdle to get over.
Always doing it, officer.
What is the local impact here within the Curville area? Well, over the last three years, you know, we've looked at distracted driving crashes, crashes that involve distracted driving the vehicle. In 2017, you can see the upward trajectory of that on this, this slide. There were 37 in 2017, 32 in 2016, and 17 in the data from 2015. That doesn't, that doesn't sound like it's a lot. But I would point out that when you look at what we're trying to regulate, which is driving behavior, the issue is not necessarily texting while driving. The issue is really distracted driving, in all aspects of distracted driving. There are several distracted driving consequences that we may need to be aware of. Many forms of distracted driving take attention away from the immense responsibility of operating a motor vehicle. In 2015, 3,477 people were killed. In twenty fifteen, three thousand four hundred and seventy-seven people were killed and three hundred and ninety-one thousand people were injured in crashes involving distracted drivers. To reduce this toll, prevention must focus on the top factors associated with these crashes. Driver distractions have joined alcohol and speeding as leading factors in fatal injury crashes. In fact, modern research and, and recent research is labeling distracted driving specifically texting while driving or utilizing a handheld device as the new, the new drunk driving. Using a cellphone while driving delays a driver's reaction as much as having a blood alcohol concentration at the legal limit of point zero eight percent. Research shows that drivers who send and receive text messages take their eyes off the road for an average of four point six seconds out of every six seconds of wheel time while, while texting. So at fifty-five miles per hour, the driver is traveling the length of a football field and the end zones during that time without looking at the road. Driving by faith. So that's at fifty-five miles an hour. Highway speeds, we have those out on Junction Highway. We have those out on Twenty-Seven East. At forty-five miles an hour, the vehicle will travel at that, with that same timeframe, three hundred and three point six feet, which, to give you a frame of reference, is approximately three-quarters of the length of a city block. So you can look at any of our blocks in the downtown area, and that's the distance traveled where you may have absolutely no idea what is really going on in front of you operating the vehicle. At thirty-five miles per hour, that reduces to twenty-three point six feet, which is roughly half of a city block. National Transportation and Safety Board recommendations in December of twenty-eleven, NTSB, recommended that all fifty states and the District of Columbia enact complete bans of all portable electronic devices for all drivers, including a banning of use of hands-free devices. Distracted driving impacts. Distracted driving is any non-driving activity that takes the driver's attention from the primary tasks of operating the vehicle and increases the risk of crashing. So there are three main types of distraction. You have visual distraction or just taking your eyes off the road. Manual distraction or taking your hands off of the wheel, either one or both. And cognitive distraction, which is taking your mind off of driving. The visual and the manual components to this distracted driving conundrum are short-lived. They're the length of time it takes for you to take your hand off the steering wheel and manipulate something in the vehicle or manipulate a hands-free or a handheld electronic device or something of that nature. The visual side may, may simply be looking down a side road or an alley and scanning for other traffic or pedestrians, taking your eyes off the front of the road. Those are fairly short-term. Cognitive or taking your mind off of driving, you're not thinking about driving, you're daydreaming about something else, that is more, that is more long-lasting. All three together, when you put all three of those together, that creates the perfect storm of distraction. And texting while driving and in many circumstances utilizing an electronic device of some type while you're driving involves all three of those and creates the perfect storm for problems to occur. You know, our goal would be to keep everybody's hands on the wheel and their eyes on the road and improve, improve public safety in that regard. Activities that can distract a driver, using a cellphone, eating, drinking, or grooming, talking to passengers, reading, including map reading, if anybody actually looks at a paper map anymore. Some of us do. Using a PDA or a navigation system, watching a video, changing the radio station, CD or MP three player, three-player, or, or texting are all distracted driving behaviors. And I would venture to say that any one of us, every day when we go on the road, see these things occurring, you know, from the fairly benign of reaching over to change the station on my radio to watching people read the newspaper or something else while they're driving. This is also, this would also extend to a regulation of handheld communication devices, but also GPS, iPods, and game systems. And we see those things occur with frequency. Current cellphone use prohibitions in Texas. What is currently being prohibited? Drivers cannot send or receive electronic messages in Texas. Cannot. The texting law has prohibited that. Drivers with learner's permits are prohibited from using handheld cell phones in the first six months of driving. Drivers under the age of eighteen are prohibited from using wireless communication devices at all. School bus operators are prohibited from using cellphones while driving if children are present. In school zones, all drivers are prohibited from texting and using handheld devices while driving. In local restrictions, since two thousand and nine, more than a hundred and two cities have adopted one or more of the three types of cellphone ordinances. We, within our school zones, have all the signage up where you cannot utilize a device in those school zones.
Is it when it's flashing only?
Correct. A hundred and two cities have ordinances currently pertaining to cellphone regulation while driving of some type. Forty-three of those cities with ordinances restrict the use of handheld electronic devices. Has to be hands-free. That's roughly forty-two percent of, of those communities in the state of Texas that have local ordinances. Possible provisions of an ordinance that we may entertain. Prohibition of the use of handheld mobile telephones and other portable electronic devices while operating a motor vehicle, motorcycle, quadricycle, or bicycle. We have all seen the increase in the use of bicycles in our area, in the Hill Country, and also the recumbent type of quadricycles as well. We may look to push that ordinance all the way to the use of bicycles. I have seen individuals, and I'm what I would consider to be a semi avid bicyclist. I've seen individuals on bicycles utilizing cellphones while operating on a public roadway and while the vehicle is in motion. Our goal is really to change driving behavior. How do we do that? Is there any evidence that making the ordinance more restrictive than state law is going to assist in that? Well, there's no real definitive study that I've been able to locate on the benefits of cellphone use and regulation. However, I do know that laws with high visibility enforcement are proven effective in changing driving behavior, and that's what we're looking to do, change the driving behavior. Possible affirmative defenses to a local ordinance would be the vehicle is at a complete stop. Again, whether that is on a public roadway or stipulated to be off of a public roadway, that is something that we would need to consider.
If you're just driving down the road and I've got to make a text, stop right in the middle of it and I'm good then, right?
Well, under current state law, if you're not moving?
Yeah, okay.
Absolutely. But we all know how hazardous that is. The device is used in a hands-free mode of operation as a mobile communications telephone or other device. Hands-free, no touching the device, that would be a potential affirmative defense. The defense is used as, the device is used as a global positioning or navigation system and is affixed to the vehicle. Again, not, not handheld. The device is used for obtaining emergency assistance, to report a crime, traffic accident, medical emergency, or to prevent a crime about to be committed. Those would be all potential affirmative defenses that need to be considered. Implementation considerations. Approximately nine entry and notification signs for the city of Kerrville. We would want to make sure that, that the required signage is in place so that our motoring public knows those that are coming from outside the city and those that live within the city, that they are entering the confines of an area where an ordinance is in place. Timeline to implementation, sixty to ninety days. Installation of signage, approximately three to four weeks. There would need to be a public information campaign and education campaign in order to alert the public of the direction we would look to go. And a grace period for enforcement. Proposed that would be about ninety days following an adoption of an ordinance for installation of signage and alert the public of the ordinance. This would not be a moving violation. It may not be made a part of a person's driving record. But again, the emphasis on changing the driving behavior and removing the hazard of distraction in the vehicle would be beneficial. The next steps would be, you consider providing policy direction regarding the desire to implement any regulations or an ordinance that goes beyond state law. And then we would return with an ordinance regulating the use of portable electronic devices while driving for the first and second reading.
So Chief, I had a question. There's only forty-three cities of all the hundreds of cities or thousands of cities in Texas that restrict completely to handheld, to not, no hands-free. Only forty-three, according to this. A hundred and two that are to some degree more restrictive, which is our nearest neighborhood, Fredericksburg. Could you give us an example of what have they done?
In Fredericksburg?
Well, any of these that are less restrictive than total hands-free.
The, the ones in Fredericksburg, I don't have the specific, their ordinance specificity. But I believe that they don't go completely hands-free, but they are a little bit more restrictive than the texting while driving. They talk about other electronic devices, not necessarily just texting. But I don't have the specific ordinance to reference.
I would just be a little curious as to what they felt like doing rather than the total nuclear option. This is not many cities out of the entirety of the state of Texas. Yes, ma'am?
We're not really talking nuclear option. It's hands-free.
Right.
You can get a call. You can answer it.
Yes.
As long as you didn't pick up the phone.
As long as you have the ability to do so.
You've got Bluetooth.
Hands-free.
Is that what you call it?
Except for the emergency situations, you could.
Bluetooth in your car.
Ms. Brody.
Okay. The, the situation of the hands-free has always kind of bothered me because I know there's studies out there and I know from my own experience, it doesn't matter if I'm holding the phone or I'm not. You go to a different place when you're talking on a phone versus talking to the person next to you. Is there studies that supported the NTSB's recommendation to just no cellphone use?
Well, they're basing that on the, the, the actions of distraction in the vehicle. So what they're basing that on is all distractions in the vehicle, whether it's cellphone usage or conversation. You know, they're not going to be able to regulate.
If you're on a phone, it's like you're, you're, it's different than if I'm talking to the person here. You're completely in a different place.
Absolutely.
But as far as enforcement of any of these, the state law says that they, you can't look at the phone. Is that going to filter out, like, we can't, we can't overrule that in a local ordinance, could we?
The state law says that you cannot text.
No, I mean, the state law, as far as enforcement. You, you pulled me over and you saw me texting, but you can't, you can't look at my phone to verify that.
That's correct.
And, and a local ordinance, we couldn't change that, right?
No.
Okay, so how, how in any of these will it be enforced? Is it just, is it going to be, it's got to go to court and you're going to, is your word against the driver type of thing?
That's correct. And the officer would have to see you utilizing a handheld device.
Okay. And has to discern how you were using it.
Regardless of what you were using it for. As long as it's handheld. If we went to a hands-free ordinance, if it's being held in the hand and being operated, then that would be a violation.
Okay, so what, I guess my question would be, what would be your recommenda, what, what would you be hoping to get to as far as? I'm most concerned on how you would enforce any of it. So what would your suggestion be?
Hand-free.
Just, just make it a, across the board, hands-free.
Absolutely.
And what does that do to, to like a GPS user? What is it, are they, are they illegal if they're punching the button?
Can you mount it on the dash?
You can mount it on the dash as long as it's not in your hand. You can punch the button, mount it on the dash, you can punch the button, go to this location and utilize the device. It just can't be held in your hand. That ensures that your hands are on the wheel and that you're paying attention to your driving behavior.
Any other questions?
Got some from the audience.
Okay, nothing on the screen, Mr. Harrison?
Just a quick question. I'm curious as to what is our city policy? Do we have a city policy or K-Pub policy for, for employees? Is it, is it hands-free or is it absolutely no use? I came from industry. I'm a, I come from industry. It's a powerful offense if you use your phone in the car and you're driving.
We do. Mike, do you want to elaborate?
We do. We carve out exceptions for law enforcement and emergency service providers. And then I think there's even an exception for, you know, public works in, in a kind of an emergency situation.
Anomaly, please.
Right.
And so the, the question was, we didn't approach, was, does the city have a policy for employees? And they do. Counsel, they're asking for.
What, what sort of process? Is it consensus? I'm in favor of seeing an ordinance, a hands-free ordinance.
They provide direction to staff, and so you could make a, a motion to direct staff, however you wish. Okay.
Well, wait, wait. No, this is a section that is just information discussion. So we're looking for consensus.
Yeah. Well, that's my two cents. We ought to, we ought to see a draft.
I would go with the, I mean, his recommendation is present us something that's going at that. That'd be me.
Hands-free. Because it, it's clear that what the state passed is unenforceable. It's, it's not going to make any difference at all.
Absolutely.
So we can go there. In the meantime, I'm going to probably see what, I'd like to see what these other cities did, just, you know, in case we have backlash.
This is never, like, you get pulled over for this offense. Insurance is not knowing about it or anything like that?
No, it's not a moving offense.
And yet it is moving, right? I mean, you see the irony of that? I mean, because it's, it's really reckless driving, isn't it?
Yes, but under the prosecution, it's, it's not, it's not a moving offense.
It would be if we did this, if we went hands-free. It would go on your record and it would be a moving violation. No?
No, it would not.
No?
Still not a moving violation.
All right. You have your direction?
Thank you.
Okay. Item number eight B is regulating the escort of oversized loads. Chief Knight.
This is another topic that we had, brought this up a little while ago amongst counsel and talking about oversized loads, oversized and overweight loads that have been traversing the city. I think we've all seen those. And we wanted to provide some discussion and information points to see what direction you might have and where you think we need to go with this. So a little bit of information about where we are now and, and actually how this process works. Vehicles and loads that, where a permit is not required. Vehicles and loads that exceed legal size or weight limits need an oversized overweight permit en route from Texas Department of Motor Vehicles to travel on Texas roads. The following maximum dimensions may be operated on Texas highways without a permit. The width of eight feet for passenger vehicles. All other vehicles other than passenger vehicles, the width. All other vehicles other than passenger vehicles, the width and loads need to be eight feet six inches or less. Height of fourteen feet or less. Length of up to sixty-five feet, dependent on which vehicle type it is. And a gross maximum weight of eighty thousand pounds. So if you are within those dimensions, then you do not require a permit to operate on There are movement restrictions that the Department of Motor Vehicles requires for notification prior to movement. And this is the requirement for the city of Kerrville. If the load is over ten feet wide, if it's higher than sixteen feet six inches height and/or one hundred and ten feet long, so if it's in excess of any of those dimensions, then we need to be contacted and they're going to need to have a permit to operate within the city. The mover has to contact us twenty-four hours in advance of coming into the city limits. And generally, they'll contact us twenty-four hours in advance, let us know that there's going to be an escort oversized load that needs to occur. And then the day that this occurs, when they approach the city limits or get to the city limits, they will contact us to have officers meet them there. This is a permanent restriction. DMV movement restrictions in Kerr County, outside of the city limits but also contained within the city limits, are pretty much the same. Over sixteen feet six inches high, if they're traveling in, on the highway in Kerr County, the mover has to contact all the appropriate utility companies. They have to provide front and rear escort, that's separate from police escort. They have to have a front and rear escort vehicle. Tech dot approved bucket truck is also required. And this is also a permanent restriction for operating oversized loads in Kerr County. There's also a restriction specifically for FM 1273 that, in Kerr County, that no permits are going to be, are going to be given from Kerr County, boundary to the Kerr County line, unless the load has an origin or destination in this restriction. And this is to prevent being utilized as a crossover from 173 to 27, or 173 to 16. They can't, they can't use that as a crossover, as a route. The only way you can get an oversized load on that roadway is whether that oversized load is going to terminate on that roadway at some point in time, some piece of property there, or it's an oversized load that's picked up on that property that's within, on that, on that stretch of roadway and moved off. City of Ingram, when you're traveling in the city of Ingram, if the load is over seventy-five feet tall or long, they have to contact Ingram Police Department twenty-four hours in advance, just like they do with us. If a vehicle load exceeds twenty feet in width or a height of eighteen feet eleven inches or a length of one hundred and twenty-five feet, the hauler has to apply for and certify a route inspection. They have to take the route that Tech Dot gives them, and then they have to physically go and look at that route to see whether or not there are going to be issues. A representative of the company has to physically inspect it and ensure that there, that the safety of the load will not be compromised, traveling public and the state infrastructure will not be at risk. A company representative has to certify that route. Law enforcement assistance may be required by Tech Dot to control traffic when a permitted vehicle is being moved within the corporate city limits of the city or at such times when law enforcement assistance would provide for the safe movement of the permitted vehicle and for the traveling public safety. That's when we get involved as a law enforcement agency providing some escorts. What are the current practices on oversized load escorts? Currently, the Kerrville Police Department provides escorts for oversized loads permitted by Tech Dot, or Texas Department of Motor Vehicles on approved Tech Dot routes. Oversized loads that are permitted at height higher than sixteen feet six inches requires a minimum of two Tech Dot approved bucket trucks to lift utility lines and Tech Dot traffic signal lines. You all have seen that. It happens on a daily basis. In many circumstances, it happens multiple times on a daily basis. Stakeholders involved in the line lift process, K-Pub is involved in this process. Their utility lines are currently at twenty to twenty-one feet. They're no lower than twenty feet, but they're twenty to twenty-one feet. So if a oversized load is in excess of twenty feet, then they're going to require a truck for the K-Pub line specifically. Hill Country Telephone Cooperative, HCTC line lifts are contracted with Cowboy Communications. That's a company out of Harper that does line lifts. They'll provide additional assets, HCTC will provide additional assets to Cowboy Communications upon request from Cowboy Communications. If they say, we're going to need, we don't have enough trucks to handle this, we've got to, we've got to move through multiple lines and lift them simultaneously, we'll need more assistance, then HCTC will provide assistance. And an hourly fee is charged for those assets. Cowboy Communications is another stakeholder in this. They're currently contracted with Tech Dot, Hill Country Telephone Cooperative, Cooperative and Windstream to lift their lines. Cowboy Communications provides this service for a fee. To give you an example of what the fee schedule is, HCTC's charge rate, seventy dollars per hour per truck and seventy dollars per hour per man. So it takes two men to work a truck. So one truck and two men, two hundred and ten dollars an hour to provide that service. Cowboy Communications, they provide what I would term the heavy lifting for all of these line lifts. As we stated, they're under contract. They assess a fee, and you can see what those are. It's up to seventeen feet five inches in height. It ranges from eight hundred to seventeen hundred dollars to perform that service. Seventeen six to twenty-one feet, different story, nine fifty to eighteen hundred and fifty dollars to perform that service. They also have standby charges based on whether or not the load is there or if they are late. And weekends and holidays, also if they weren't, if they weren't notified. We've had circumstances where loads that needed to notify did not, and they were caught within the city limits and they needed to call for bucket trucks, and that rate goes up for those assets and resources to be brought into, into place. Some of the historical perspective on what we see locally, there have been a total of one thousand one hundred and sixty-one oversized load escorts conducted by, by the police department, our involvement, from September of 2016 to December of 2017, twenty, twenty-eight months. And that's actually a typo. That's September 2015.
Oh.
My typing skills.
Wondered about our add-in.
May need to be looked at. One thousand one hundred and thirteen and a half staffing hours were utilized for police escorts of oversized loads. Pulled all this data from our, our record management system. Staffing costs accrued for the conduct of oversized load escorts from the police department at twenty-nine thousand, three hundred, two hundred and thirty-eight dollars. In 2017, the average staffing hours per call rose to one point zero four hours per call. In 2017, the average number of officers for escort calls rose to one point nine two officers, or two officers, for each call. Now, cost for, for this was calculated by averaging sworn officers' hourly rate and multiplying by a total number of hours. This graph sort of shows, and it's actually, it can be fairly interesting when you look at it year to year, you sort of see a pattern. And I don't know why that pattern exists, where you have the spikes in, in two months and they sort of parallel each other on oversized loads. I don't know what that, that signifies. We have been unable to determine exactly why.
May, April, May and June.
Oversized load escort calls per year sort of stabilized. Twenty sixteen and twenty seventeen is pretty close to each other. The data that we have in 2015 was only over four months, so, but if we were to go back and look at it, I would say that that, that load, escort load call volume would probably be a little bit less than what it is right now. We were really interested to see what the impact of the work that was done at the 511 mile marker Harper Road would have on oversized load escorts. It really hasn't impacted us greatly. I think that, you know, we moved the height on that from, to sixteen feet five inches, both east and westbound. Most of our oversized loads are, you know, they're obviously in excess of sixteen feet six inches, and, and most of them are really approaching in the seventeen to eighteen foot range. So their ability to traverse on IH-10 is, is negated because of the height restrictions on that overpass at 511. But also the, the 508, sixteen north, in terms of how to utilize that, how to get on to, to that, if we were to bring a load up 534 to sixteen, when you look at that, the northbound side, that height restriction is sixteen feet two inches. Now, the southbound lane is sixteen feet ten, but of course, we would have to, number one, it's, it's, it's below the seventeen to eighteen foot level that we see. And number two, if we did have something that met the height restrictions and our ability to get underneath there, there are issues with, we have to close down southbound traffic completely and route it into the oncoming traffic lane and then try to make a very hard turn on the interstate, which would be, is why we don't do that. Average officers per unit escort, we talked about this, it's up to two officers. We removed a fraction of an officer, but we have a, a upward trajectory on that. And the staffing hours per escort as well have gone up when you look at those as an average. Many of the escorts, when you, the reason why, many of these escorts require actually more than two officers. And those are officers that are part of our traffic unit and sector officers because, you know, many of these escorts require more than two, two officers, two units to make that escort. But we have enough that are one and two unit escorts to drive that average number of officers called down. Proposed provisions of an ordinance that we would entertain, provide for the addition of police escort permit fees to the Kerrville Municipal Code of Ordinances. The permit fee applicable for each police unit required when a structure or load is moved under police escort in or through the city limits of Kerrville, Texas. And we would recommend that that fee be fixed initially at a hundred dollars per unit per trip. And the reason for that is we looked at, you know, our average is two officers. We, we, we calculate on the overtime rate. We do that for funeral escorts as part of our fee structure. The overtime rate, if you look at, at the average across the board, including all rank structures within the field ops division, you're looking at about forty dollars an hour. That's what we use for planning. And for off-duty assignments, we use a rate of five dollars per hour per vehicle for billing purposes. So that's how we came to that, that particular potential fee structure. Also, you may want to be aware that there's another restriction on the city limits of Kerrville and operating oversized or over height loads, and that is a curfew that's in place, and that's through Tech Dot. That curfew currently, if you have an oversized load, we're not going to do an escort, we'll just curb you at the city limits until that curfew is over. Those curfew hours are seven in the morning to eight fifteen in the morning. We're not going to move an oversized load during that time. Eleven thirty to one fifteen in the afternoon, and three thirty to five thirty. And those times ironically coincide with high traffic volume times in Kerrville. If there is a rush hour, it's during those times. And also, that's also the time when, for the most part, where we deal with school zones and, and work those areas. I bring that up because the House of Representatives Committee on Transportation met on February eighth to discuss and review the management of oversized load escort system permitting. And that set of curfews is not a part of an ordinance. So we will, in all probability, need to come back, in any event, regardless of what we, we come up with here this evening or what the consensus is, we probably need to come back and put that in the form of an ordinance so that it can remain on the books with Tech Dot, because we do not want to lose the ability to enforce a curfew on movement of oversized loads in the city and have to start taking them during those times of high traffic volume and school zone enforce.
So you would want that as a part of the same fee? Would that be part of the same ordinance? If you set a fee and you set a curfew?
We could do that.
I need to talk to Tech Dot more about the curfew.
Okay.
That came up with Mike Coward on Friday, that he alerted us that, so, but we could do that, bring something back.
And basically, Chief, is it generally one or two? The majority of the time, two units or one?
You know, I would say that most of the time it's two.
So it would be two hundred an hour, is what you would be asking, per unit?
Well, that, well, the average length of time for, for the escort is, is under an hour. So two units.
I meant per trip, I'm sorry.
Yes.
Okay. And so I discussed it with Mr. McDaniel this week. One of the things, we, what we're doing is taking officers off of their duty during that time to do this. And occasionally, I think he said, you may have to call somebody in, in an emergency situation. We'd have to pay somebody to come in and fill in. So this would offset some of that cost as well.
It could very well potentially do that. I would tell you, really what it does is sort of offset some of the cost to the city and the department. When you look at it in reality, unless we called in a hundred percent duties, officers in an off-duty status to come and do this, which are, it's somewhat difficult, difficult to, to coordinate, the reality of the situation is that if we move to a fee structure, those officers are still, the traffic unit officers and the sector officers are still going to end up doing oversized load escorts and being taken out of, out of the neighborhoods or off of traffic duty in other areas. And the only, there's only one other way to, to resolve that, and that, and that is to bring on additional officers. And that's, that's a fact of the matter.
It just smells to me like it ought to be something closer to two hundred dollars than a hundred dollars.
Generally, it is.
Because you've got management time involved and you've got all kinds of risk. And all it takes is one bad happening.
True.
And anything you might have made, and I'm not looking to make a lot of money out of this, this is a service.
Right.
But at the same time, I don't want to see the city underwriting this for all the people that deliver multimillion dollar gadgets on hundred-foot trucks.
Well, and the reason that we came up with this, like I said, we were, we were really basing this on what our current fee schedule is for, for instance, funeral escorts. And other types of escorts.
And your price, and your staffing cost, you said were about twenty-nine thousand accrued, is what you said.
Yes.
So that'll work over that.
Twenty-eight month.
Personally, go for, you know, at least a hundred and a half.
Chief, any sense on where the traffic is originating and, and the destination? Are they all pass-through traffic? Some of it's local, what?
The vast majority of it is pass-through traffic, in that they're just going from points east to points west and points west to points east. Some of it, you know, there's a healthy mix. Some of it is terminating within the city limits, coming in and going to a specific location here in the city. So we have a healthy mix of it, but most of it is, is pass-through traffic.
Mr. Brody, you had a question?
So it was actually that.
So, it was actually that, so, the majority of it is to get around our, they're really traveling down I-10, and they just, they're having to go around those bridges, right?
Yes.
Or no? Okay. And to Mr. Ferguson's point, the $100, if I'm reading it right, already has a decent amount of markup in it, right? I mean, it's a safe amount of
Yes.
... coverage of true expenses. Now, I understand opportunity costs, that, I mean, what you were talking about, you're pulling them out of somewhere else, and so, we're, as a city, we're losing service there, it's not a real dollar service, it's a, it's just reality. So, I mean, I'd be okay with 100 as far as, see how it goes, and you kind of assess it after it.
And to clarify, we're working on these, this is $100 per unit, per trip.
Right.
You know, so if I have two units there, that's a $200.
Right.
Right.
But there would only be one officer in each car?
Yes, ma'am, correct.
How long do those generally take, Chief, east to west?
Well, they can be fairly lengthy. The average at this point in time is just, is just right at an hour.
Okay.
When we average them all together.
Unless we hit our curfew language.
So, that probably doesn't involve...
They have to do it at midnight.
Probably does involve lifting many lines, if they do it in an hour.
Well, it does, but, you know, that contractor normally has two, two different bucket trucks working simultaneously, you know, in order to traverse many of the intersections.
That's not our expense to list the line.
Correct.
That's K-Pub or somebody, Cowboy or somebody else.
Yes, they contract directly with Cowboy Communications.
Right. Good information, I'm all for it. Do you need a motion? Do you need...
Just consensus like the last time.
Okay. Consensus to request it? Okay? All right, we have a consensus. Thank you so much for your research, Chief. Maybe this will make life better for everyone. Item number eight, C, does anybody need to take a break?
Yes.
I'm sorry. Mrs. Summerlin, at 8:32, we'll take about a five-minute break, sorry.
Have a seat.
I was just about to ask.
Okay.
Showing that there is fluctuation throughout the month. Staff is focusing on complaints first, on the balance of the work day, work week, or the month, they're actually out proactive, looking for issues before they become major Just a map showing the cases across town. The green ones are closed cases, the red ones are still open, as of January 31st. We talked about kind of cycling through the city. The green area is, has been completed within the last eight months, the red area is in progress, and the blue area is continuation of this process through the rest of fiscal Of those 280 cases, we've had 247 that were voluntary compliance, they're working with staff. How can we approach this problem? How can we help find a solution to this problem? Some of those did involve some volunteer work from the community, some of those were just compliance by the property owner. Some of those properties changed hands, and the new owner took care of the issue, and so on. We do have 31 currently in progress, and two that have gone to court with a citation. The court system kind of forcing those either through fines or forced compliance. The proactive enforcement helps to build the consistency of enforcement across all of Curville, not just specific areas where we're high on complaints. By addressing the issues early, it allows the aesthetics of Curville to be more appealing from the street, and before they become major problems, by staff going out and addressing them early on, whether it's something as simple as weeds or trash and rubbish, before it becomes overbearing problem, we can get, get a hold of, get a handle on that, excuse me. And through that, has the potential to lessen complaints. And staff is looking for some direction and consensus to continue with the proactive code enforcement alongside the reactive and addressing the complaints first.
I noticed, Norman, what is water disconnects seen?
Water disconnects through K-Pub, if we have, or, excuse me, through the water department, if we have non-paid bills. Code enforcement's been working with the water department to go out and make sure the water, it has been disconnected, and if the home is or is not occupied, so that they know what timeframe water needs to be turned back on, if it has been, if it is an occupied building still. So, going out to do a first inspection and a second inspection on those, just to make sure that things are taken care of for the actual occupants of the building.
Okay, and I noticed that they do more of the junk vehicles on the proactive, which is good, rather than what's actually turned in, and the other looks like about the same on the trash and debris and high grass and weeds, so somewhat less in the proactive, which is probably better. So, they're going after things that people normally don't complain about, is what it looks like to me.
Right.
So, I like that approach myself. Does the council have any comments?
I do too.
Okay.
I applaud it.
Thank you very much. Any other comments, questions?
Sounds like good work to me.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Number nine is the city manager's report.
Okay, so, there's a capital improvement project report that I provide monthly, it's coming around to you from the day there. A lot of these items, we've actually talked about this evening or recently, you might enter about that, so I'm not going to touch on them. You all have personally got a copy of Texas Town and City, so be sure to check that out, because we have a feature here on River Trail, a very nice article that the city has featured.
Also, I want to make a quick announcement about Curville 2050. The open houses were a tremendous success, and thank you all for, many of you all that were able to come out. We had an overwhelming number of attendees, and I really feel like the community has taken this plan on as their own, which is a nice feeling, that it's not something you're driving, as they've picked up and they've, they've actually, you know, got a life of its own, the whole project. So, we started our next round of subcommittee meetings this week, we've had three of them already, those are going very well, and very animated, but that's okay, that's what the process is about.
Right.
I'm also happy to report publicly, because I've shared this with the council, that we've launched, really, two and almost three early action items out of Curville 2050. Number one would be, we have launched a study for the possible creation of a tax increment reinvestment zone in the downtown area. So, within the next 90 days, they'll be studying that, bringing together pro forma, developing some scenarios, and then, if we want to proceed after they present their study to you all, then another 90 days for creation because of the state law requirements. So, just as a reminder, a tax increment reinvestment zone is not the imposition of a new tax, it's simply taking the growth in values for a defined area and capturing those values and applying your existing tax rate against it, and then those monies have to be used in that boundary or that district. So, it's basically saying, what's, what grows in this area is spent in this area as a defined area, and here we're talking about the downtown. And there's a whole plan that's got to be approved, and a board created, and so on and so forth, so more to come on that issue. The other early action item that we have initiated is a hotel and/or conference center study, and I know that we've done that before, but it's time to update the information that we have, because our market has changed. So, we've, we've now launched that study, and that's also a 90-day study. They'll look at, you know, what the market might support in terms of number of rooms, the price point per room, the space a conference center could be given, you know, what announcements we've heard locally or in the region, whether it's Bernie or Fredericksburg, they'll take all that into account. They'll talk to the CVB and business owners, and probably the university and others about what their needs are. And then they'll also look at, what's the prime locations for the, possible locations for a facility, and then bring all that back for us to, to use, to, as we deal with hotel operators, and also plan for the city's future in Curville 2050. And then finally, we have just about finished a scope for our long-range water planning. We have already hired a law firm that is about to hire a subcontractor of an engineer to look at long-range planning, and that project will take longer. It's very intense, probably nine months to 12-month project. And so, it's kind of exciting to already have things coming out of Curville 2050 and gain even more momentum as we move the process along. So, Mayor, that's my report for this evening.
All right, thank you. Any questions?
Just anything going on with the theater?
The Arcadia?
The Arcadia?
Not at this time, there's been some tire kicking from the private sector that I have gotten wind of, but beyond that, no.
Okay, thanks.
All right, thank you for that report. Item number 10A is appointment to the Recovery Community Coalition, Ms. Gray.
We have one term due to expire December 31st, 2019, due to a resignation from a person currently holding position five, which is a representative from the mental health support organizations such as the state hospital. We have one term due to expire December 31st, 2019, due to another resignation of a person holding position four, which is a citizen of Curville with interest in the issues. There are 15 members and nine categories, and any of the nine categories have multiple members in that category, as long as each category has at least one member. I have five applications on file, and those have been provided to the city council. The interview team consists of council members vocal and Summerlin, and they requested the appointments be on this agenda.
All right. Let's see, why doesn't my, there it is, request to speak. I move, Mayor and Council, that we appoint...
You make a motion.
That's right. I beg your pardon.
Forgiven.
That we appoint Dawn Elder and Kendall Young to the vacant positions. We expect another vacant position soon, and it's exciting to have discovered that the superintendent of the state hospital is willing to serve. So, for the first time, we'll really have that category filled. Dawn will be in a... Which position? An eight. Dawn Elder will be an eight, and Kendall Young will be a four. Let's see. So, they don't replace the resigning people's categories, but overall, we still have all the categories except that state hospital one filled, and we're looking to get it filled next time.
Next meeting.
So, so we had eight, empty, vacant? You're going to put, you want, you're proposing Dawn Elder for position eight?
Yes.
Okay. She is, she would be in category eight. Gotcha. Kendall Young would be in category four. Now, those don't, you know, they don't exactly line up with the ones that resigned. I got you. But overall, we're covered.
Can I ask a question?
Sure.
Because I thought you had to have a number five.
You don't, as long as you have another number five.
Right, so who's our other number five?
Our, our next meeting, we'll appoint a number five.
That's right. Coming as soon, next time, as soon as we get the...
There was a timing thing of someone stepping off the board, and we...
Oh, okay.
Yeah.
All right, good enough.
You tell me.
No, no, that's good.
The number five, the number five that we have had was kind of shoehorned into the definition.
It's a player to be named later?
No, she just kind of shoehorned into the definition, and then she found that it was not to her liking anyway. So, now we can really have somebody who represents the state hospital.
And both of these applicants have been attending the meetings.
They are, and enthusiastic, eager to serve, so we feel great about these two.
Okay.